Okay, I'd like to call the -- to order the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, November 21st, 2019. Can I have a roll call, please?
Rodriguez.
President.
Green.
Here.
Fragoso.
Here.
Kirline.
Here.
Gonzalez Parber, absent. Chair Swift.
Here. I'd like approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion or changes?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Public comments on non-agenda items, we have no "public" here at the time. So I'll bring that back to the commission. Consent calendar, there are no items scheduled for the consent calendar, so we're on to public hearing items. First item is discussion, consideration, and possible recommendation to the town council for adoption of a draft urgency ordinance and a draft ordinance that would update our development standards for accessory dwelling units as mandated by Assembly Bill 881 and on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town Attorney Janet Coulson is going to give your commission. Town Attorney Coulson is going to give a PowerPoint overview of the recommended modifications to the code.
Good evening. So, just keep in mind, I'm the messenger. Do not throw things at me. Do not yell at me and get upset, please. I don't like this any more than you do. But I'm here to tell you that the state has enacted some legislation that has taken the modifications to the ADU, accessory dwelling unit ordinances, that we've been doing over the past several years, a huge step further. And I think they're out of patience. And it's fairly draconian. But I just want to try tonight, we have a whole task force at the firm who's looking into all the new housing laws and with ADU laws, also the renter protections that were enacted by the legislature. And tonight, I'm going to give you just a few sort of highlights of the new ADU ordinance. The major thing to understand is that we need to have an ordinance that is compliant with what the state has enacted by January 1st. If we do have such an ordinance, a compliant ordinance, there are some things that they will allow us to do. They're all connected with objective development standards. There's nothing subjective. We can have an ADU permit. We can charge a cost recovery fee to review an ADU application. But essentially, it's a ministerial approval with a building permit before someone can build an ADU or a J-ADU. And so what we have done is we've taken both of our ordinances, an ADU ordinance and a J-ADU ordinance that are in the code now, and we're removing them. And we have something of a model ordinance that I think was given to you. And we have a list of possible objective development standards that you can, we can insert into our model ordinance. We're comfortable that the model ordinance is compliant with state law. And the reason why this is super important is because there's something of a poison pill in the legislation. And it says that if your ordinance is not compliant with state law, the entire ordinance is null and void. So you can have a severability clause, but it doesn't do you any good. The entire ordinance will be null and void. And I think, just in my opinion, this was designed to stop the testing of the waters that sometimes happens. Well, let's see if this will fly. Let's see if we can do this. And put, you know, put sort of cutting-edge types of things into an ordinance and have a severability clause. And so if, for example, the thing you want to try doesn't fly, you're challenged and it falls, it's the only thing that's cut out. That's not what's going to happen now. So if we put something in the ordinance that was found to be noncompliant, the entire ordinance is gone. And you're stuck with the state standards, just the state standards, which are very minimal, having to do with a little bit with size and setbacks and height and... So anyway, let me go ahead and try and give you some background and some sort of broad general overview, and then I think we can get into some of the suggested, there's a list or a table of suggestions that Ben has come up with that we've looked at. We're still looking at them, I will tell you, we're still looking at them in depth. And I'm good, I can see. Can they see?
Yeah, I'm just worried that some of the questions may not...
Oh, okay. So we're planning on going to the council with an urgency ordinance at their December meeting, so that we have something in effect by January 1. We're following with a regular ordinance. This is the normal thing that we do when we have an urgency and we have a regular that follows. It will trail, and there will be a slight gap if they both go together. So that, you do that with any kind of urgency ordinance, so that if, for example, you're challenged on your urgency findings and they fail, you only, your urgency ordinance may be thrown out, but you have your regular ordinance that came right up behind it. And so you only have a small gap of time when you didn't have an ordinance in place. That's a protective measure, and it's a standard sort of thing that we always do with urgency ordinances. But in any event, let's get to, isn't that cute? It's an accessory dwelling, and I thought that was a cute picture. So there are several bills that were enacted, and really the major one to pay attention to is AB 881, and then only Section 1.5. The other three we'll talk about in a minute. But that's, there's a little bit in 2.5, but for the most part, Section 1.5 of AB 881 is the thing that we're focused on right now. So... I have, you know, I could send you copies of this if you'd like it, okay?
Actually, that'd be great if we could get copies of the slides.
Okay, yeah. There aren't that many. I didn't want to make it a big massive presentation here. But some of the highlights of 881, the things that are really different and new, you can have ADUs on multifamily lots, multifamily residential lots. You can have more than one ADU on one lot. So if you want, you have a primary house, a main house. You can have a J-ADU, usually that's part of your main house, and you can have a detached There are maximum four-foot setbacks, side and rear. We can have a front yard setback, and I think we're gonna, that's going to be something we're going to do. The state only has side and backyard setbacks. So no replacement parking means that if you convert a garage to an ADU, you can't require that they replace the parking. People are not happy about that.
No owner occupancy until 2025?
So you cannot have a requirement that requires there be owner occupancy of the main unit that sunsets January 1st of 2025.
It does not apply to JDU's.
Right. What it says is that you can't, you can't have, the owner, the owner has to live there.
You cannot require the owner to live there.
Until 2025.
That provision that says you cannot require the owner to live there will sunset January 1st, sunsets January 1st of 2025. So right now, you cannot require the owner to live there. Come January 1st of 2025, if nothing is done, then again, you'll be able to require an owner occupancy requirement. So the building permit only section expanded. It's not just conversions now. And you'll see that in the model ordinance that we gave to you. If you have nonconformities on your property, and this is with zoning requirements, just zoning requirements, that's okay. You can't make people correct them before they can get an ADU. The "can replace" just means, for example, if you have a shed built and it goes into your side yard, goes into the four-foot setback on the side yard, you can't make somebody move that out of the side yard if they want to convert that to an ADU. And what you can do is, you can actually, I know this doesn't, you're not going to like this either, but you can actually tear it down and build your ADU with the exact same footprint. So that's what the "can replace" means. You have a shed that's nonconforming, it's in the setback, you can tear it down, build your ADU in the exact same footprint, in the setback, and that's okay. And that's, this is what I was talking about, if any inconsistency with the state requirements will void the entire ordinance immediately. There was a provision that said a noncompliant ordinance was just sent back to what was in effect in 2017, but that's gone now. Any inconsistency will void the entire ordinance. That's why we're being kind of hyper vigilant about the state requirements and the compliant part of the ordinance, because we may not like it, and we may want to push the envelope a little bit and try different things. This is not the time or the place to do that, really. Right now, we just need to have a compliant ordinance. Some of the other bills that we talked about, you saw on that first slide, they were mentioned. AB 671, housing elements now must promote ADUs for affordable rentals. AB 587, this is probably going to be rarely used, but there is a provision for separate conveyance selling of an ADU in very limited circumstances. And AB 670, this is kind of an important one. HOAs are now limited like cities are. So if you had HOA requirements that governed your ADUs, you don't anymore. So this is what we did. We prepared sort of the template. It's a conforming ordinance. And if you have objective development standards, ministerial type of things, no subjectivity to them at all, we can insert them into the template. And we're recommending that before January 1, we adopt it as an urgency ordinance, and it says concurrently with non-urgency as a backup. Some places are not doing that. They're taking a risk that they'll have a larger gap. That's fine, if they want to do that, if they think the risk is low. It's, and that's a way that you can kind of work on the regular ordinance and try and get it to be something that's not so rushed. And I realize this is very rushed, but the most important thing to remember here is the urgency ordinance needs to go to the council in December in order to be effective on January 1, so that if somebody comes in on January 2, we have a compliant ordinance. Because right now, if we don't, we'll have nothing, because our ordinance right now is not compliant.
Through the chair. You mentioned a list of ministerial standards that we could add, but those are not included in the ordinance that we received, are they?
So they're separate. And we thought it would be very confusing to try to insert them, so that you would have to try to tell what we were adding and what was the main template ordinance. So we gave them instead as a list, right, Ben? Yeah, so we gave them as a list of things, and I think Ben even came out...
Yes, I provided a new version, which is on your roster, where we realized we hadn't addressed front yard setbacks, so we've included that requirement in the latest list of optional ADU additions.
And please understand, there's, there are a lot, this is very complicated, lots of twists and turns, and I can't really, tonight, I can't tell you exactly what you can do and what you can't do. What I think would be the best thing to do in that regard is, when we get applications, we look at them on a case-by-case basis and try to review them and make sure that they are in conformance. We, it's, until you have an actual scenario, it's really difficult to tell exactly what you're going to be allowed to do. It's a little bit easier to take an actual case or an actual scenario and figure out whether or not that is compliant. One of the other things that is important to understand, I think, and this is not on the slides unfortunately, but, impact fees. And this is a little complicated, too. And I, you know, I hesitate, because there's a lot of information I could give you, I don't want to overwhelm everybody. But just as an aside, impact fees, you can charge, that's like school fees and traffic fees and park fees, and those can all be charged, but not for an ADU of 750 square feet or less. So no impact fees for ADUs of 750 or less. And then if you have something that's greater than 750 square feet, keep in mind that those impact fees have to be proportional to the size of the main house. So you have a main house, you have impact fees that would be on a main house. Let's say your ADU is, you know, a fifth the size of your main house. It's greater than 750, but it's a fifth the size of the main house, and those impact fees can only be 20% then of what they would be for the main house. So it's a new dwelling, but it's not a full dwelling, and it's proportional. That's kind of an important thing that's found in another piece of legislation, not 881. But in any event, so if there are questions, I'm happy to try to answer them, but, and I think Ben also, we've been going over this, Ben and Linda and I have been going over this now for more than a week, and we've been trying to think of all the different things that could come up, and I think we've kind of driven ourselves crazy trying to think of all the different things that could have come up. But we're happy to try to answer any of your questions.
So is that the end of the staff report?
No, I just wanted to add briefly that when Janet referred to the options, the objective development standard options, what we did very quickly last week, late last week, was look at what the template version of the ADU regulations didn't address and hadn't been eliminated by the state. That's the main concern, is that there are certain things the state mandates, for example, four-foot side and rear setbacks, that are inviolate. The only instance where you could require greater, where you can change the setback or the setback is different for those two areas, is where you have a legal nonconforming structure, in which case, it's wherever that structure is located. So what we did with the memo that, in the latest version is there, is we looked at all the things that your commission, if they so desire, can recommend that the town council adopt as part of its ADU ordinance. And I can go through those items if you'd like, but, you know, importantly, the state is, and you have to also understand that these ADU regulations, in essence, replace the, any, not only the chapters for ADU and J-ADU, but I was glancing at the zoning ordinance and the single-family residential chapters also say you can have one ADU, and obviously that's superseded. So what's happening with this is, this stands as more, basically, the entirety of the town's regulations governing ADUs.
And J-ADU.
And J-ADU's. So what we tried to do, and before I get granular, just big picture stuff, some people were referring to this as the death of single-family residential zoning. And in Oregon, they're probably even further along the roads, where they're specifically saying, you know, there's no more single-family residential. So that's kind of the context of what's happening here, is the state's kind of taking over this whole residential zoning at that level. I mean, they're taking over housing regulations on a much broader scale, as your commission is aware. But for ADUs and J-ADUs, they're simply saying that, yeah, we like them, we want them, and in fact, we think that they should be on every lot. So that's, that's something to keep in mind, is that with what Janet has laid out, that's, there's no going back from that. And in fact, we can probably anticipate further changes. I mean, you saw the number of bills that they were doing this year, and they don't show any signs of slowing down. So that's something else to keep in mind if, as we try to talk about local options, is that we can put a lot of work into certain local options, and then in a matter of months, have those completely superseded. Fairfax right now doesn't have impact fees. I don't know as how it would really benefit us to do so. Again, that's sort of the effort for the anticipated benefit. We don't charge them for residences and things like that, regular primary residences, so I don't see getting into that fire. Staff has been very concerned about fire impacts. Fairfax has been so wonderfully progressive and responsive to fire issues for very good and sufficient reasons. And so one of the things we were discussing very deeply with the attorneys is, what do we, what do we do with something that in essence says you can have triplex zoning with no parking, no owner occupancy on our existing substandard street network that is in high-hazard fire areas? And Linda has given you a copy of the, of the, something I received at a planning directors' meeting yesterday, and this is SB 330, which is a separate housing mandate from the state. But I just wanted to point out that Fairfax, according to this map, and I need to confirm it, isn't listed by the state as a high-fire hazard area, which is absurd. We'll need to do some checking. But one of the things in conversations with council and other planning directors is ultimately to address the fire hazard, it may require further legislation. And so we would love to figure out a way to approach that collaboratively with other jurisdictions. But again, because of the poison pill provision in the state code that says, hey, if you adopt something, you know, say banning them outright, and it's found to be inadequate, you know, one of the questions for banning it on the basis of fire safety is, well, what do the fire professionals say? That obviously those folks need to be brought on board before we can do that. That's a process that staff intends to follow up on, both in terms of whatever designations at the state level that Fairfax has or various parts of Fairfax have, to get that synced up with the reality that we know we have, and also have that conversation with fire. Ultimately, we may want to consider the legislative options in terms of addressing things like inadequate road widths, impediments to fire access, such as on-street parking, where you don't have any onsite parking or it's inadequate. So we recognize these are very real issues for this town and are very concerned about it, and of course, look forward to direction and comments from your commission. But suffice to say that, as Janet reported, we need to get something on the books now so that we can have regulations that preserve some of Fairfax's autonomy and direction beyond the very minimal standards that the state has included in their statutes. And in terms of what we're recommending, you have the very latest version of my memo. And so we're talking about things, where I've done strike-throughs, that was something that upon further evaluation, in terms of, for example, you can only end up with 50% of your existing residents after you do the interior conversion, you see that struck through. So that basically, we're not recommending that you do at this time. In terms of front yard setbacks for both single-family and multifamily, we are recommending it. In terms of architectural standards, you see in your, in your template ordinance, it just said, insert it there, and so we had time to work on language that we feel is sufficiently objective, so that we can preserve some compatibility with existing residences. And that if, we also recognizing that we're eliminating the requirement for getting a tree permit, which is after all discretionary and somewhat subjective, that what we're simply saying is, if you're removing a protected tree, you have to do a two-for-one replacement with 36-inch box-sized native trees. The intent there is to basically say, please provide the same sort of careful design that, as we know, we try to avoid removal of protected trees. And so in this case, we're simply saying, if you're going to be removing trees, you're going to have to plant them somewhere else, and they're going to be big ones to provide that. And then the last thing is, we haven't yet adopted any historic building codes, but we know that we're kind of moving into that with our objective development standards work. That will be coming before your commission in the not-too-distant future. So we're just in anticipatory mode, saying that if there are objective development standards that arise, well, actually, this refers to the state historic building code, but it also provides a segue for the town adopting its historic regulations, and we may be able to have some requirements in that regard to apply to ADUs and J-ADUs. And that's it. If you have other questions...
Do the chair.
Let me add one more thing, kind of backing up to the very beginning. Of course, the reasons why the legislature is doing this is because of the housing crisis. And I think everybody knows that. But there are some concerns that people will build ADUs, J-ADUs or whatever, to have, you know, Airbnb, to have short-term rentals. And so we have a provision, and we're allowed to do this specifically by the state, no short-term rentals, less than 30 consecutive days. So you can have a month-to-month tenancy, but you can't have a short-term, shorter term than that. So that's an effort to try to stop the, this is designed to try to have affordable housing, and if you just have them all be short-term rentals, then that's not affordable housing. So it's in an effort to try to address that issue.
So is that the end of the staff report? Okay. And to your point on the short-term rentals, I think they do not permit them anymore with this, whereas before you had that flexibility to do that, and we didn't permit it here because we wanted longer term, and I think they've done away with that for any. But what I wanted to do is get everybody's questions answered, because I know I have a bunch, and I know everybody else does, before we then look at Ben's memo and look at that. What I'd like to do is just get everybody's general questions asked first, and then get into the specifics of the plug-in language. So who wants to go first?
So you're saying you only want us to ask questions on the actual staff report and not the proposed standards? What about the map? Can I ask a question about the map? Okay. Could you clarify for me, please, this map that we were just handed out?
Yes, and I was debating whether or not I should even provide it, but I, because this was given, handed out to the planning directors at our meeting yesterday, and I was talking about Senate Bill 330, which has, again, more state mandates relating to housing provision. And SB 330 has an opt-out if you're in what's considered a high-fire-risk area, as designated by the state, not locally adopted rules.
What is it that you're opting out of?
Well, it would say that it's inapplicable to put in lots of housing as mandated by Senate Bill 330 if you're in a high-risk, fire-risk area. What I haven't had an opportunity to do, and if you look, well, it's hard to tell where Fairfax is, but suffice to say, it's not in a mapped high-fire-risk area, state high-fire-risk area, according to this map.
Okay, that was my question. If you could just clarify, I clearly see the numbers 1 through 5. So we assume that the number 5 is not a, the least high-risk, I'm sorry, number 1 is the least high-risk, and number 5... is the least high-risk, and number five, the most risk?
No, no.
What do the numbers mean?
Those are supervisory districts, as with many things that emanate from the county, you know, it's sort of like carved up into the supervisory district. So that's a little bit.
Okay. And so Fairfax, and so Fairfax, only the red area is considered a high-fire risk, but the arrow for Fairfax points to number two with the crosshatch.
Right.
That means...
Katie Rice.
Yes. But that means we are not considered, none of Fairfax is high-risk?
I would couch this in saying, based on this map, and what I intend to do is to get as much information as quickly as possible when this goes to the town council.
Okay, because I had heard the opposite.
Yeah, in terms of woo-wee and things like that. If nothing else, it's saying that somebody at the state thinks that we're not in that and that we would need to have a conversation with whoever is producing these maps to say, hey, we're high-fire risk, so you need to move that red area in through Fairfax.
Yeah, I have also a question about the map. I mean, more of a comment, really. If you take a look at it, the red high-fire area is, does sort of dig into Fairfax a little bit, right? And so that, if you know how these fires spread, I'm sure you do, this thing could mushroom very quickly into Fairfax and cover all of where number two is. San and Salmo, however, is a luckier in that they have this whole white area between the red area and them, which makes them slightly less. So Fairfax is close to the vulnerability, but you can also point out while you're talking to officials, there's no border there. That forest continues right up to everybody's houses.
Oh, and the chair is acutely aware of the severe fire risk. She's been deeply involved with fire protection efforts and putting in fuel breaks around urbanized areas in the Ross Valley and things like that. So, yeah, it's really dangerous.
It would be good to get the map clarified, because as far as I'm aware, we're in that Level III high-fire area risk per CAL FIRE. So it would be good to understand this mapping a little bit more.
May I ask a follow-up on fire? I thought that I read it somewhere, but I guess I didn't highlight where it is, and now I can't find it. I thought I read something about fire sprinklers. So can you explain, is there any impact on the state's proposed legislation, in fact, to what, like, fire jurisdictions can do?
Yes. I believe the main thrust of this has to do with internal conversions of existing residences to provide an ADU or a JADU inside the residence. And at a certain percentage of work, fire will require that everything be sprinkled. But below that level, and I'm not sure if it's a 50% remodel, and I don't want to speak out of school on that, but if the main residence isn't currently sprinkled, wasn't required to be sprinkled when it was built, then they would preclude fire from mandating it. In terms of brand-new structures, and again, I'm not the fire people, but my understanding is that for new, for example, for new detached ADU, they would have to comply with all current codes, building and fire, which would include sprinkling. So that's as near as I can get to clarification on that.
Also, you mentioned the impact fees can be in proportion to the main houses. That same, I thought I read something about the utility fees as well, does that follow along the same? I know normally they don't require utility connection fees, like if it's an internal unit, but if it's a detached, they will. So can you explain that a little more?
Given the timing and the inability to communicate with the various utilities, and particularly MMWD, who, as we know, has some pretty substantial hookup fees, we can't really report on how that affects them. I mean, generally speaking, you charge for the cost of providing services, but, yeah, and you're correct in that it's understood by staff that if it's a JADU or an internal conversion, which at this point might apply to an ADU as well, that there would not be a new meter, and therefore, the hookup fees, et cetera. But I can't really say. I think this is a topic, the whole thing about going to triplex zoning, you know, if you're going to put a label on it, deserves conversations with all of the affected utility providers and the fire services and the building people as we go forward, because in Marin, it has significant consequences.
Cindy, I don't know, I have lot coverage in FAR, but I can, we can, I can come back to those if you like.
I have questions on those, and probably everybody else does, so go for it.
I'm not sure if I'm understanding this correct, but page six, we talked about the floor area ratio and the lot coverage, it seemed to be different than what our residential zoning standards are. Is that, am I interpreting this?
You were looking at the original one, and staff aired, I'll point the finger right at me, is that, we made that correction, and then we somehow, in the final version, it didn't end up, so you're correct, if you don't have the corrected version, the corrected version talks about .40 FAR and .35 lot coverage. So that is what our current standards are. We're not, for the record, we're not making those more stringent than what the town's current requirements. But another point of that, and this might be an area of confusion for some, is that an 800-square-foot ADU is allowed on any residential parcel in Fairfax. So if you have a teeny-tiny lot with a teeny-tiny house, less than, let's just say, 500-square-foot house, you can, if you can fit it in, put an 800-square-foot ADU on that lot.
And another way of saying that, I think, is that you can have your FAR, your lot coverage requirement, but that aside, you cannot prohibit someone from constructing an 800-square-foot ADU that's 16 feet in height and meets the four-foot setbacks side and rear. So regardless, if they go over your FAR, they still get to have at least an 800-square-foot ADU, 16 feet in height, and they have to meet the setbacks, and that's it.
I'm sorry, does that not contradict what we just got?
No. What you received was something that added the front yard setbacks, but in, and those are additive to what the ordinance, I should clarify that, too, is when you look at the template, this isn't replacing that template, it's simply saying that, for example, where the proposed ordinance says four-foot side and rear, we're adding for single-family residential and multifamily residential, a 10-foot front yard setback.
I was talking about the 50% of the floor area that the ADU...
Yeah, in the latest version, that struck through.
...with the primary dwelling is limited to 50% of the floor area of the existing dwelling.
That struck through in, from what's in there. So what was on your dais, we're not looking at that anymore. We're looking at the regular ordinance, the proposed ordinance, the entirety of that ordinance. So just ignore that.
So ignore this?
Yes.
Okay.
If it wasn't clear that that struck through.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just since I'm on here, my last comment, I'm wondering if there may be language in the general plan about the architectural character of the town to be preserved that could be helpful in the red comments, and also in terms of historic building code. If at all possible, we could talk about a property that's eligible to be listed rather than simply one that is actually listed on the historic building code.
We'll take those two comments and take it under for further review.
Laura, did you have any more questions? Okay, go ahead.
Can I just interrupt on this one question? I'm having a little difficulty following you guys, and I'm a freaking lawyer, so...
I know.
Under the revision to F-1B, in the memo with the red line, the colorful memo, and I know we weren't supposed to talk about that, but I'm just trying, I'm having difficulty following it, because I'm just now looking at the one that was on our dais when we came in, and I'm not really following this change. An attached ADU that is created on a lot with an existing primary dwelling is further limited to 50% of the floor area of the existing primary dwelling, period. And then, I don't even see where this, if, an addition, and then 50% was at, so I'm not sure why it's being, oh, it's on the new memo?
It's in a new memo. Let me see if I can find where it is in the original.
So maybe I can help by, the 881 has a provision that says, if there is an existing primary dwelling, the total floor area of an attached ADU shall not exceed 50% of the existing primary dwelling. Attached.
Mimi, yeah, take the one that doesn't have the strike-throughs for that 50%, and crumple it up, and just use the one that we put on your dais in front of you. So there's one that has...
I'm not crumpling that up, because that's the one I reviewed, and that's the one with all my notes. So I can't forget my notes and crumple them up and just look at the blank one. That's not going to help me understand any of this.
Okay, very good.
So I guess, though, the one that you put on here tonight is the one I think that Mimi's referring to, that says for, and maybe I'm wrong, F-1B, an attached ADU that is created on a lot with an existing primary dwelling is further limited to 50% of the floor area of the existing primary dwelling.
Correct, and what you should do is...
But then what's that stuff, DB1 and DBN?
Yeah, the blue, the language in blue is what's been struck out, and if you go to F-1...
But what's been struck out from where is my question?
That was being recommended by staff as an optional addition, and we're no longer recommending that. So what has struck out isn't in the current...
So you guys are redlining something I never saw, and the result is so much more confusion than there needed to be.
Mimi?
Staff, apologies.
So let me, this was attached to the staff agenda item one, it was on the very last page of the memo.
So to clarify, we had attached...
And it was Attachment C, it was called Attachment C. You don't have it, it was part of the staff report, Agenda Item One, it was the very last page.
So attached was staff's recommendations to make local changes that we could look at. That was in our staff report. Then, when we got here, that was already updated. So what this is, isn't, these are options you're giving us to personalize the ordinance with our changes.
Correct.
Right.
Rather than simply eliminate what had been, what we had originally recommended in Attachment C, we felt it would be best to say, okay, that was, the former Attachment C is what you have in the colored language, and then we struck it out.
I apologize, I actually never got to see.
That's okay.
My, I'm sorry, let me, my question is that on page six of the staff report, under specific ADU requirements, maximum size, it says exactly that, an attached ADU created on a lot with an existing primary dwelling is further limited to 50% of the floor area of the existing primary dwelling. That is the state requirement of page six.
Correct, subject to the minimum 800-square-foot ADU size and the four-foot setbacks and the 16-foot height.
And I don't think that's clear, under the language of C right now, where it says, application of other development standards, or at least the one I was reviewing, said, application of other development standards in this subsection F, such as FAR or like lot coverage, might further limit the size of the ADU, and it doesn't really get at the 50%, also being subject to the 800-square-foot requirement that is referenced under C, and I think that's confusing.
So we will look at further clarifying that, that it's understood that regardless of the 50%, this and that, that it's understood that people get 800 square foot. And we tried to clarify that in the staff report as well, but, yeah.
Can I ask an overall question here, procedurally more? We are dealing with, right now, tonight, recommending a urgency ordinance, so that we have an ordinance in place on January 1st, correct? Then we're also dealing with part, just part of the eight and nine, apparently, and 10, of the non-urgency ordinance, the finally-proposed ordinance, to try to get in there.
It's also in the original.
Right, so we need, we can't really pass, I mean, recommend an ordinance that doesn't have things filled in. So what I'd like to do is if we can, just trying to hone in on what we need to do tonight, and get the job done, because I hear the urgency.
The urgency ordinance didn't need to come to Planning Commission. We brought that just as a courtesy, because we knew we were bringing the regular ordinance here. And it worked out timing-wise, that we would have enough time to notice and go to council with both of them as a package. Some cities are just taking the urgency ordinance to council, and they're not yet going to their Planning Commission. They'll go to their Planning Commission in December, or maybe even January. But when you take them both as a package, they need to match. So the urgency and the regular ordinance need to be exactly the same if they're going as a package. And so we kept them together and brought both here, instead of trying to separate them out, we kept them as a package. So in your resolution, I believe, it's both recommending to the town council that they adopt an urgency and a regular ordinance concerning ADUs and JADUs. And what we tried to do, because we knew this was going to be incredibly complex and very confusing, we have a template, a model ordinance, if you will, and it is kind of the bare minimum to be a compliant ordinance, compliant with state statute. And then there are sections, areas of that model template listed, where jurisdictions can plug in things that they may want to do to customize, or to personalize, or to make it their own. And instead of putting those into the ordinance, where you'd have to kind of try to pick them out, we put them on a separate sheet, so that you could look at them all together as one thing, and decide if there were some that you were really in favor of, and some that you were really not in favor of. All of them have been reviewed, first-pass review, and we think they will fly. But we do, we are still looking at all of this, and so minor, nothing major, minor modifications may happen. Generally, what we're looking for tonight is a recommendation to the town council to do both an urgency and a regular ordinance for ADUs and JADUs at their December meeting. That'll be the first reading on the regular ordinance, you know, the second reading won't be till January, and it won't actually be in effect until February, 30 days after the second reading. But the urgency ordinance goes into effect January 1, so that when you open back up in January, people can come in, and there'll be a compliant state ordinance in effect, and we can process their applications with some of the customized provisions that we are allowed to maintain. So we are hopeful that you will be able to look at the list of optional things that you can insert into the model ordinance, and say, yes, we recommend, you know, this one, this one, this one, but not that one. We think it's important to do this and that, and not the other. We would like to have that type of recommendation from you.
And further, it would apply to both urgency and the regular ordinance because if they're going up together, their language has to be identical. So you, you are able to add the optional language to both. I mean, you would have to.
So let me, is it, I mean, this might sound strange, but is it possible to adopt this entire list or are there things that are so contradictory that that couldn't be done?
No, you can, those, we did review, as I said, minimally review of the list. And so we're, we're comfortable that they will be able to be inserted into a compliant ordinance. And that, yes, those things on there are things that you can do that we think will withstand judicial scrutiny.
Okay, thank you.
May I also point out that there is a lot of urgency here and we really do apologize for that because it is better to sit and think about it and to work with it and to have multiple meetings and talk it out. That does, this does, none of this prohibits you from, come January or February, from taking another look at it and crafting something that you like better and replacing what you, what you enacted. Because the urgency ordinance will be in effect in, in January and part of February. The regular one will then pick up and be in effect in February and on until you change it. And you can change it at any time.
Okay, perfect. I don't like it any more than you do, by the way. I assume there's lobbying going on and stuff.
You know, right now there's a fair amount of shock, I think. But everybody is trying to adjust as best we can right now. And then I think there will be certainly moves for, for their legislation in the coming year. And things like fire safety will be one of those things that will probably drive further legislation.
Any other questions?
I have questions.
Go.
And I've got a lot of sort of big picture recommendations. And I guess we'll go into those after the public hearing part. And so what I'm just trying to do is lay a little groundwork for my own quest, thoughts later on. Is there a reason why we're simply amending or proposing to amend 174810 when the existing code goes from 174810 all the way through 1748250? It just seems format wise odd. And there's a lot of provisions from the old, the current code that are sort of incorporated into this template and, or changed in this template. So it's confusing that way. Was there some thought process behind that?
Well, the idea is to replace everything that exists for ADUs and JADUs right now with the new model. The new model is going to look like things that have been done recently because as you can see, maybe you probably don't have 881, but 881 modified existing statute. And so a lot of this was already in state statute, but there have been modifications that have taken it two, three and four steps further. And so we're trying to completely replace everything we have right now with the new model. But the new model is built upon some of the things that exist right now.
Okay. I guess, you know, we've also built in these pre 2025 requirements sunset that would purportedly go back to pre 2020 requirements. We've got references to requirements that were in effect at the time a unit was constructed, I think. You know, we've got different time periods and we've got the old code or the current code. And we've got references to things sunsetting and going back to the way they were, which is one of the reasons why I was wondering if we were just amending one section and the other sections sort of go into not sunset altogether, but rather they're going to potentially reemerge? Or are we anticipating something completely new reemerging after 2025?
I couldn't honestly tell you. It's, it's really that much of a moving target. All I know is right now, what we've tried to do is to make sure that we have, what we have on the books is compliant with what exists right now. And then, you know, next year, I'm sure there'll be another round of legislation. There'll be more changes. If you recall, we've been amending ADU ordinances now for the last several years, trying to keep ahead of every, every year, there's some new legislation that comes out of the state that we need to try and, and keep up with. And so this is what's happened this year. It's, and it's pretty drastic and to the point where it's necessary, we feel, to remove what we had before and basically start fresh with this new model ordinance, although, as I said before, the new model ordinance does build on what was in existence before.
And Mimi, further to your point about how everything's lumped under 17048010, we are replacing chapter 17048 in its entirety, you know, in the whereas clauses, section three. But just in terms of formatting, in order to get this in under the deadline, I think it was in an effort to just simply use a template that has been extensively vetted by legal specialists to say, okay, this is what you as a local jurisdiction can retain discretion or, or not discretion, don't use that word, control over. And so that's, that's because that's the formatting. So yeah, everything is now 1748010 and then it's got the ABCD.
Are there other, I thought there were other new amendments to various housing and, you know, planning that also have other sunset? And I don't necessarily see those reflected. For example, the
This is just about 80 years. It doesn't deal with any of the other housing laws yet.
Okay, so it's only, I'll get into the whole 881 thing later, but that's where you're coming from.
Right.
Because it's just that part.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mimi?
I would like
At this moment?
I would like to also mention that we're going to have a presentation on the December meeting of town council on all the new housing laws. If, we're going to send out an invitation to the planning commission if you'd like to attend. We thought one presentation, everybody could watch it, would be cost effective that way. But we are, we are going to talk about all of the housing laws.
This next town council meeting?
Yes, the next, the December meeting.
Sorry, did you say other housing laws as well would be discussed at that time?
Yes.
I have a significant number of other questions and we don't have other items on the agenda, so I hate being rushed through them. And I don't want to be too nitpicky, but I'm either going to want to go through all of them before we open it for public comment or after we open it for public comment. And in some ways, I think it's better to make sure, I've asked my questions before we open it for public comments, so the public can also benefit from that. I wonder, for example, if we have given those who are here copies of the regulations summary that you guys gave us. Otherwise, I'd want to go through that so that our members of the public can also get a chance to understand what some of these things are before we talk about debating them.
I totally agree. I have a whole list, as I usually do, of questions. And as you said, you know, there isn't anything else other than a discussion item in our normal business on the agenda. So I want to take as much time, since we're getting this right now, as much time as we need to get all of our questions answered. So go for it.
Okay, cool. Thank you. On attachment A, which is the urgency ordinance, I understand there are two different standards that we're dealing with for urgency ordinance versus the non-urgency ordinance in terms, no, they're both under the same standard?
Standard, what do you mean? They should be identical. I mean, one has urgency findings attached to it and the other one doesn't.
And the urgency findings in the urgency ordinance, I'm specifically looking at the whereas clauses on page one of attachment A. And so let me start here. This, one, two, three, four, five, six, whereas clause number six talks about how if we don't do something, our existing codes on ADUs and JADUs become null and void. And the town would thereafter be limited to applying the few default standards that are provided in government code section 65852.2 and 65852.22. And because 881 is, I guess, the source of these amendments, and I got to tell you, I can't even get the latest version off of Google or Westlaw of, of government code 65852.2 or government code 65852.22. So I'm frustrated because it's just, you know, I have to now figure out 881. But it seems to me that what we're saying is that one of the reasons why it's urgent that we move forward here is that we don't want to fall back on state law, which is, I think what we're saying is it's more generic, not appropriate for the unique character and nature of Fairfax, right? And in the next whereas clause, we get into a little bit of that. And we say that the approval of ADUs and JADUs based solely on the default statutory standards without local regulation governing height, setback, landscape, architectural review, among other things, would threaten the character of existing neighborhoods and negatively impact property values, personal privacy and fire safety. And then we say, these threats to public safety, health and welfare justify adoption of this ordinance as an urgency ordinance to be effective immediately upon adoption by four fifths of the town council. And so first off, I want to address the idea that we're referring to these threats to public health, safety and welfare. And what we've identified in this clause is neighborhood character, property values, personal property. I'm sorry, personal privacy and fire safety. To me, there's only one that really jumps out as public health, safety and welfare, which is fire safety. I think we also need to include flood safety, earthquake safety, other safety issues in this finding because to me, when you're weighing the interests of affordable housing and addressing homelessness in this state, you know, hanging our hats on negatively impacting property values, personal privacy and frankly, character seems out of balance to me. And I think we need to throw in some more issues that are of concern to us because there are many more. And some of them we touched on a little bit in terms of impact fees and utilities and whether we have the capacity to address traffic impacts, sewer impacts, water impacts, yes, quality of life impacts. But I think it's, it's disturbing to me that we would hang our hat on this type of, you know, ordinance based on things in my mind that aren't as significant as the housing crisis.
Okay, we're, when we make urgency findings, we're open to all suggestions and the more the merrier, basically. If there are other things that you think should be in here, we're certainly happy to hear those and include them. We're trying to make defensible urgency findings and so more stuff is better.
Yeah, I had a, this is funny because we do have competing interests going on. I mean, I had a conversation with a business owner around here who have, now will be shutting down on Fridays because they can't find anybody to work on Friday because they can't find someone who, you know, is close enough to live here. So there's that problem. And then there's our problem. We're Fairfax backed up against the fire zone in the hills and we have no place to expand to. Whereas you look at other cities, I won't mention any, but there are lots of cities that have tons of flat land and, you know. So my question, I have just a question here is what is the actual foreseeable impact to this immediate area here of, of this ordinance? And then if we adopted many, many, let's say, of the regulation summary, regulation summary, you know, project ideas to add to sections eight, nine, 10, will that, will that lessen our impact? And is there any way of even knowing that? So that's, that's the kind of question I have, it's impact question.
It's designed to lessen the impact and it's hoped that it will. Really, you don't know, I think, the impact until you see how many people wish to avail themselves of the new law. And there may be a lot and there may be very few. We just simply don't know yet. And so that's, we're preparing for it. Having something in effect January 1st means that we're prepared, you know, the next day that, that town hall is open and
I'll also say this, we researched the number of ADUs we've been approving in recent years. And in the last two years, we're on track to do about 10 a year, which is considerable. So we don't anticipate that rate of production declining anytime soon. And in point of fact, you know, if somebody can now do two units in addition to their residence, we might see some of that. So it, it, our feeling as professional planners is that the existing, you know, before January 2020 regulations, we're doing a pretty good job of providing accessory dwelling units. And this city or this town was part and parcel of that provision of new legal safe housing units. And it remains to be seen what the new regulations do.
Mimi, do you have more questions?
Yeah, so you guys, what I don't hear is, have you guys got an understanding of where Marin sanitary is? If you're taking a shed and you're turning it into an accessory dwelling unit, is that affordable in terms of hookup for sewer, you know? So have, do we even know what those costs are? Because anecdotally, I believe that that's one of the larger things that's sort of preventing these units from being developed. There's a reference to the septic systems in this template that refers to onsite water treatment systems. And I didn't know if that was a reference, you know, it says use the county of Marin environmental health service requirements. I didn't know if that was a reference to incinerator or composting toilets or what the deal was with that.
Well, to your first part of your question, as I stated earlier, this has been so hurried up. Literally, it's been a one week timeframe from looking at any kind of language to having Literally, it's been a one-week timeframe from looking at any kind of language to having this meeting today. We knew it was coming, of course, but in terms of looking at code and then having conversations with affected utilities and what they do and don't charge, I mean, there are many sides to an issue. On one hand, are we to subsidize the provision of these hookups for these units in the interest of affordability? I mean, if so, fine, but we don't know that at a local level. We don't know any, what any of the utility responses are, or even the school districts. You know, you could throw in school fees, for example, as well. So that all remains to be seen.
And there doesn't seem to be any ability to impose rent control for, to require affordability, no kind of, let's limit all these things to, you know, very low-income rentals?
No, and furthermore, there's other state law provisions that say that you can't have the effect of discouraging the provision of housing through affordability requirements. So I would dare say that the size of the units will probably go a long ways to determining rents.
Not what we learned in my minutes from last month's meeting, apparently.
Michelle, questions? Okay, I've got questions. Mimi mentioned the JADUs had to be in a dwelling that is owner-occupied, is that correct? I thought we didn't, I thought neither any of the units on a lot at this point in time had to be owner-occupied so that theoretically you could have a developer come in, build house, build, put in a JADU, put in a couple ADUs. None of them have an owner on the lot, is that correct?
It's a good question. I think there's different viewpoints based on different readings of different statutes. I don't believe we have that owner occupancy requirement for anything at this point.
So my understanding is we cannot, we used to have, I think, but we cannot have an owner occupancy requirement until 2025, January 1st of 2025.
Okay, that's what I thought. So even if you had a house with a JADU, there was no owner-occupied requirement anymore? That's one of the changes.
We've got some language on page five of the draft that I can see that says all JADUs are subject to an owner-occupied occupancy requirement, blah, blah, blah. However, the owner occupancy requirement of this paragraph does not apply if the property is entirely owned by another governmental agency, land trust, or housing organization. And this just highlights another question, which is, you know, how much of this stuff applies in Fairfax? You said we don't have any impact fees. I'm wondering also about the open space area requirements that's referenced.
The open space area is pertinent to multifamily development, and so we do have numerous properties with multifamily structures on them, so that would be applicable. We stand corrected on the owner occupancy provision, and if it's there, it's because the state law allows us to continue to apply that for a JADU.
So, and I'll go back and double-check that. On the urgency versus non-urgency ordinance, we could theoretically recommend approval of the urgency, but take on the non-urgency separately, could we not?
You can separate them out. What that does, if they don't go together, it creates a larger gap in time before a regular ordinance will be in effect. And so if there is a successful challenge to your urgency ordinance based on findings and it fails, then you have state law being in effect from January 1st to whenever your regular one takes effect. This is, this way, it's designed to have as small a gap as possible, but certainly you could change the regular ordinance, make it different. It can trail, it can go later, some jurisdictions are doing that. What I think is the better course of action is to keep them together for right now, and if you want to again, immediately take up the regular ordinance or another regular ordinance, knowing that it will still further trail, you can certainly do that. So if you, if the planning commission wanted to look at the, a second to regular ordinance, let's say, and not finish working on it until January or February, and send it on to the town council, and then there are two reads in 30 days, and maybe it would take effect in June or July or something like that.
But that's feasible.
You could do that.
Right.
And the only thing I'm pointing out is that if you do a regular ordinance with the urgency, you have a very small gap right now.
I think it was Laura mentioned the sprinkler piece of it and the requirement, and in the code, the proposed code, it said fire sprinklers are required in an ADU if they're required in the primary residence. So if a primary, and I think that's the same as what was in our existing ADU, I don't think that's changed. And I think how I read that is if the primary residence, as it stands now, doesn't have a fire sprinkler, then the new ADU wouldn't need one either.
That's for attached. So you're adding on to your house. Your house is not sprinkled. You're adding on an ADU.
So that's only for attached, not detached?
Yeah, if you build a detached one, you can, you'll have to comply with current fire codes.
Okay. And we don't have, from what I understand, any fire regulation safety standard for setbacks? Is that correct? It's just...
Correct. The fire setbacks are dependent on the type of construction and openings, and so it's, I don't want to use the term moving target, but it varies according to whether you have, for example, one-hour walls and stuff like that. As I pointed out, typically, fire departments, in my decades of working in Marin, fire departments like to see a minimum of three-foot clear on sides and backs of structure so that they can access those areas for fire personnel and put up ladders if they need to. And the state, possibly in recognition of that, does have that four-foot setback, which would apply that, provide that separation.
Multiple residential developments. So when we talk about multiple residential developments, we're talking about areas in town that have apartment buildings, correct?
Yeah, it's the definition multifamily, multiple families in a structure.
But it also, can it also be a duplex or a triplex? So it's anything that, any lot that has more than, when you talk multiple residential developments, apartment buildings, and we have those, we have apartment complexes, but also a lot is a lot that has, already has a duplex or a triplex on it considered a multiple residential development?
In the absence of further definition, I would say yes.
Okay. But we're not necessarily sure on that.
Well, it would be, as the term is commonly known, so again, the first thing you do is you look up multiple, we don't define that. So then you would say, well, if it's more than one unit as it exists right now and it's consistent with the zoning, then that would be, the multiple unit regulation or standards in the AD regs would apply.
Public transit. So for clarity, for me, has the definition, because we went through this with Victory Village, is the definition of public transit just basically a bus stop out there that some type of bus stops at at some point in time on a regular basis. So that could theoretically be a bus stop that has a bus that stops once a week versus what we've looked at previously where it seemed when we were looking at items like this, bus stops had to have a more frequent and regular schedule of bus stop, I mean, buses stopping at that bus stop. I don't see anything in this, and it's a concern, that says that there's a requirement now for any more frequency than just a bus stop with something that stops there.
I don't even know if it's a bus stop, it's a bus route, I believe, but yes, prior discussions dealt with state housing code provisions allowing much higher density and for typically multiple units, and those, they were looking at transit hubs and headways of 20 minutes or more. Linda might have something else. So, yeah, it's, we're just dealing with a bus route.
Right, so I'm just trying to get clarity on that.
I think there's a statutory definition in the new, you know, Janet, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, but what I was looking at had a public transit means a location including but not limited to a bus stop or train station where the public, public may access buses, trains, subways, and other forms of transportation that charge set fares, run on fixed routes, and are available to the public. So it wouldn't, I'm looking at 68, which isn't 881. So I'm trying to figure out if this is the new definition of public transit.
And it's in your exhibit A in the definitions, number 11, page two, exactly as she read it. But there's no reference in the main body of the document going back to that the location of the ADU has to be now within a half a mile, so I don't even know why the definition's in here anymore.
Yeah, so you've got, it's number 11 on page two, yeah.
Before we get too much further beyond what's a multiple family, we do have a definition of a multiple family. Well, I just add it here. We have, oh, multiple dwelling. Definition of multiple dwelling, a building or portion thereof used for occupancy by three or more families living independently of each other and doing their own cooking in the building, including apartments, group homes, and row houses. And then we have a definition for two-family dwelling, a detached or semi-detached building containing two dwelling units and designed for occupancy by two families.
So that was called multiple dwelling?
Multiple dwelling and two-family dwelling, and then we have a single-family dwelling.
Do we have primary dwelling?
No, we have single-family dwelling.
Where is that?
It is under D.
And that corresponds kind of with the building code because the building code distinguishes single-family, building codes apply to one or two, whoops, sorry. Yeah, the building code distinguishes when you have more than two dwellings, it's still you're under single-family dwelling, building code regulations. After two dwellings, then that's when the multifamily regulations kick in in the building code.
Unless the construction triggers otherwise, the material, like if it's...
So parking. So just trying to get clarity on the parking changes from what we had before. So if the ADU is within a dwelling, there's no more required parking. So that's a change over our prior ADU. If we're creating an ADU where we're taking that shed or that carport or garage and converting those to ADUs, there's no requirement for the primary dwelling to replace that lost parking, correct? So we're losing a lot of off-street parking with this that will go to something later on, but I just wanted to clarify that. Kind of a general question, can we designate what zones allow ADUs in town? When we look at, because you can look at, according to this, the impact of ADUs on traffic flow and public safety. So is there the ability for a jurisdiction to look at either what zones, if there's zones that may have narrow roads, public safety, fire safety, traffic flow concerns? Could a jurisdiction look at that? And then could they also look at maybe portions of a zone? I don't know if overlay is like a good term, but maybe portions of an area that could be constricted enough that there would be those traffic flow and public safety concerns and limit ADUs within those?
One of the challenges with picking a zoning district is our residential zones typically encompass areas that are very constrained, you know, as you get further up in the hills with the narrow street widths and the turns.
Can you speak up a little bit or closer?
And the inadequate parking, so it's hard to pick out a zone and say, don't do it in the RS6, for example. You know, it's both areas that have pretty decent traffic flow and areas that are pretty tight. In terms of the fire safety, I discussed that briefly earlier about, yeah, we recognize that the hillside areas have those major constraints. One of the kickers, though, is we're approving new single-family residences and have been approving ADUs in all of these zones, in all of these areas. And so when we're making a big deal out of safety and probably factually, if we start to see a trend towards triplexes with no parking, you could probably say that's different, but as things stand, it's going to be hard to parse it out and just say, don't allow them in this zone.
On that same point, though, does it make sense to identify our specific zones? We've got zoning section in here, let me find it. And we don't, we don't identify the zones that we're planning to, let's see, the language I'm looking at on page four, E1A, and I don't know if the latest version has changes, I'm sorry. So you guys will have to correct me if I'm not reading the latest thing. An ADU or JADU subject only to a building permit under subsection D1 above may be created on a lot in a residential or, I'm thinking we should be saying residential zone or other zone. Okay, that allows residences. And then there are specific zones in our town that allow residences, is that correct? And we could list them here to be specific about what those are without running afoul, I hope, of 881 since I think the former language said we should identify the zones that these ordinance would apply to. Is that the way you understand it?
If, yes, if your commission feels that, we're not going to be able to do it tonight, obviously, but if you feel that it would be better to have a recital of all of the individual zoning districts that allow residential in some permutation, we could, we could do that.
Well, let me clarify, we do allow residential units in our downtown, in our commercial areas. Is that true of all the commercial zones?
It's true of the vast majority of the zoning districts in the town, yes, so...
Are there any zones where residences are not allowed? Are there any zones where residences are not allowed?
In any format, there's a governmental zone. What's that one, Linda?
Yeah, there's, there's the public domain, and then there's a couple of the commercial zones that don't allow it by right, but they allow residential by use permit.
Which means they allow them. In the open area, it does allow it as a second, as an accessory use, which is probably interpreted to mean that it allows it, period. So the OA zone does allow residential, so, and we could research that further, but...
I think it would be helpful to know which zones we're actually identifying in this ordinance.
No, I, I agree with that. Maximum ADU size. And I'm trying to look at the changes that we have in here versus the, our other ADU ordinance. I thought in our existing ADU, we had an attached ADU, 50%, not more than 1,200 square But have we changed that with this, having it a maximum of, I mean, I think when I looked at this, and of course I can't pull it up now, what we had before and what we have now differ?
Yes, because, because before you could limit it to 50% of the square footage of the house, now if, if 50% is less than 800 square feet, you can't, do I have that correct?
Right, right, but, but before we had, before we had it 50% of the house, not more than 1,200 square feet. And I don't see the 1,200 square feet in this, I see it as, I thought it was, we had a lower amount, which I just wanted to clarify, I'm not concerned about.
One A has 850 square feet for studio or one bedroom, under maximum size?
And what's, but what's the maximum size?
It says the maximum size of a detached, again, I hope I'm reading the right one. A detached or attached ADU subject to the subsection F is 850 square feet for a studio or one-bedroom unit.
Or 1,000 square feet, right?
For a unit with two bedrooms.
Okay, so all I'm clarifying, and I'm not arguing with it, but all I'm trying to clarify is that our prior ADU had not greater than 1,200 square feet. So what we're doing with this is taking that to, to 1,000, which is we're taking it down to what the, what the new laws show.
So how does, how does that...
My understanding...
Just, just, because you, you produce this list of subjective standards.
Right.
So I just want to know how that, how, well, and inside is the objective standards list. So there's an objective standard called size of ADUs in the chart, right? And then there's this F1, which is basically the same topic, right? So the question I have is, were the objective standards designed to be placed under sections eight, nine, and 10 of both ordinances? Or are they kind of like, are they supposed to be woven into where they kind of belong?
No, this is, this is a summary, it's a description of the salient points, but to the, to the topic of unit size, when we're talking about attached, that's separate from conversion. So what's happening with the conversion where it's interior only is it's staff's opinion that there is no effective maximum size, that somebody could take an existing structure and convert it without doing an attachment, simply a conversion.
Right, but what I'm saying is that in our prior ADU, we had attached 50%, not more than 1,200 square feet. This one, and again, I'm not arguing it one way or the other, I'm just trying to clarify that the existing proposed change is following what the state's new requirement is, which is 1,000 square feet for the bedrooms. All I'm trying to do is clarify that we're, what this is doing is, is changing what we had in the ADU, just to try and understand the differences.
For an attachment, it appears that the size has dropped from the 1,200 square foot max to the 1,000 square.
Well, it appears that we dropped it in our code.
Well, consistent with what the state law.
That's the state requirement.
Right.
We used to have a minimum size of no less than 150 square feet, and I'm wondering if we have a minimum anywhere.
The current provisions don't have a minimum, and that's one of the questions going forward. There, there's some language in the state statutes.
I think the current does have a minimum.
Is that the 800 or what is it?
17048060, "The accessory dwelling unit shall contain no less than the 150 square feet area minimum required for an efficiency dwelling unit as defined in Section 17958.1 of the Health and Safety Code."
Okay, and I apologize for getting so many of these wrong, but I just have to say that I was looking at this basically for the first time late Thursday and Friday.
I'm not judging you, Ben.
No, but I'm just saying is that, yeah, so I'm, we sort of had to come up with local options and take the template and say, "Here you go."
Right, so that's why we're asking the questions, because we're tasked with trying to unravel this tonight.
Yes, thank you, yes.
So, I would imagine unless Health and Safety Code has changed, that we've still got a minimum, and we might want to make sure that we look at the minimum. I wouldn't want people to create a 40-square-foot ADU.
Oh, remember, these all still have to meet building code requirements.
And I don't, in the existing ADU, I don't know if the 150 dealt with like a JADU, kind of the, the health and safety requirement for like an efficiency unit within a, like a JADU within a...
Laura, isn't the 150 square feet like a building code thing for a minimum size? Yeah, so that's what's setting that 100, or what previously set the 150 square foot.
I always understood it was supposed to be like the state code for what an efficiency unit was.
Right, like the health and whatever part of the state.
17958.1, and that is included in the definition of accessory dwelling unit. I think there's that reference there. It's either an efficiency unit or a manufactured home.
So, multiple accessory dwelling units, so the code seems to say that you can have a multi-dwelling unit that has boiler rooms, attics, basements, storage rooms that can theoretically be converted. I guess they'd be ADUs, assuming that they meet the building code, correct? Okay. Uh, let's see what else.
Before you leave size, can I go back and ask another question? On size, remind me what the language in our current code says about a shed that doesn't need a permit. Doesn't it have a height limit based on the slope and the higher slope? And I'm a little bit, you know, we just talk here about the top of the height, and we don't talk about the bottom of the height. You understand what I'm saying?
No, I do understand. Accessory structures, I think in all our regular, you know, in RS6, RS7.5, limits accessory structures to 15 feet in height and one story, and that height's measured from any point of natural grade. So even if it's...
From the highest point of the natural grade to the top of the, peak of the structure. But it's not from the lowest part of the natural grade, it's from the highest part.
It's from anywhere within the footprint of the structure. I'll find it for you.
So that could, that could be the highest, I mean, that could be on a slope. If it's here, it's from there versus the bottom of the slope, right?
Yeah. I think, I think your answer kind of points out why we should actually list the residential zones in the ordinance, because you just, you just labeled a couple, you just named a couple where, you know, I think to eliminate ambiguity and maybe clarify the ordinance, unless, you know, the council doesn't think so.
Can I ask a question about height, since you're, since you're on that?
Can I read a definition of height real quick before we get too far away from that? Okay. "Height of building, the vertical distance measured from a point on the natural grade to the highest point of the structure directly above. At no point shall the height of the building exceed the allowable height above natural grade." And in our residential zones, we limit accessory structures, let me just get there. I think it just limits them to 15 feet.
That's what my question is about.
Except as otherwise permitted by variance, no accessory building or structure on any lot shall exceed 15 feet in height nor contain more than one story, provided that handrails required by the Uniform Building Code shall not be included in measuring height.
What section are you reading?
So I'm, I'm just in the RS, I, I just picked one. So the RS6 zone, if you look at Section 17.080.060B, but it's in all our, all our residential zones under height, if you go...
Can I bother you to read that one more time?
Yeah. "Except as otherwise permitted by variance or by the provisions of 17.052 of this title, it's the variance section. No accessory building or structure on any lot shall exceed 15 feet in height nor contain more than one story, provided that handrails required by the Uniform Building Code shall not be included in measuring height." But the state law says we have to go to 16 feet.
Well, so does that mean... It sounds like the, if you took an, an existing accessory building that was 15 feet high and you converted it to an ADU, then you could go to 16 feet.
Right, but does that mean those two sections would have to be amended if it says nobody can be above 16 feet, or is accessory structure no longer mean accessory dwelling unit?
The accessory dwelling unit ordinance is going to have to be separate, standalone. It cannot reference any other section of the code for any standards. It needs to be complete.
It needs to say, notwithstanding anything else in Fairfax's codes, here's what we say about ADUs and JADUs, basically. So even though we have a 15-foot limit on an accessory structure everywhere, it would be 16 feet, and the person who comes in and pushes their ADU up a foot beyond that tool shed's height of 15 is going to have to be approved, too.
Yes.
Can I ask another, for instance? If we have an existing residence with a couple of stories, how should I phrase this? If we have a property with several stories, more than one story, and, and an ADU is proposed as an additional story to that property, is the entire development still governed by the overall height in our zoning ordinance? Or is the ADU in that instance separate and not governed by the maximum overall height of what a single-family residence should be?
Yeah, it would reference what's in the code, and, and that would also include where applicable, the number of stories. So if somebody wanted to add a story beyond what was allowed, they would have to get a variance.
No, I think the ordinance on page nine references nonconformity requiring a conditional use permit.
It would depend on which nonconformity.
So, so overall height would not be an acceptable nonconformity in establishing an ADU?
It would have to be nonconformity with, with the ADU parts of the, of the code.
Of the discretionary, discretionary things it's referring to here.
I, I thought a portion of this talked about that your attached ADU couldn't be any higher than the existing primary dwelling. So you couldn't have a two-story primary dwelling and put your ADU, your attached ADU on top of it, well, or I guess underneath, well, you couldn't increase the height of the primary dwelling with your attached ADU, yeah. So it would have to be the same height, correct?
Yes, and, and I would like to caution that we expect, you know, there are particular situations where we may see situations like the one you're describing, and we'd like to reserve that for when it comes.
So, because I'm not done yet, in the draft ordinance, we're setting the ADU processing fee. So we're identifying $500, I think, for a processing fee. We don't normally put fees in our ordinances. We have, and the town council just went through this, where they reset fees. Why are we including the processing fee in here versus leaving it out, because it's going to change from time to time? And just having that as a part of all the other fees that we have, like a fee, a separate fee structure? I didn't understand why it was in this ordinance.
Under the state statutes, it requires the jurisdiction to adopt it, where it says it can adopt a fee. So my, my guess is that if we don't adopt a fee, then we can't charge a fee. So we could at some future date do it, but as of January 1, we would just as soon charge that fee. So you're correct that we normally include it in a separate, we have a separate fee schedule, and we should probably look at that fee schedule, which has, actually, just went through their first reading.
But you could adopt a attachment.
We could, we could amend it to, to adopt it, but this gets that fee in effect as of the date of the enactment of the urgency ordinance. So, and we've done the, we've done the quick calculation to determine that that's a reasonable amount.
It's cost recovery only, and it is in here basically just for the January 1 deadline, and we will put it in the fee schedule and probably pull it out of this.
So, impact fees, because I had a question about those. To clarify, you can't charge an impact fee for anything less than 750 square feet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because I was looking at that and thinking of recent ADUs that have come before us. One new building on Ulima that comes to mind that I think had an ADU that was 600 and something square feet attached to it that could probably have handled an impact fee. But now this is telling, you're telling me we couldn't do it for anything below 750 square feet, but you're also telling me that the town doesn't charge impact fees to begin with?
Correct. So if we did in the future want to have a comprehensive impact fee ordinance, we could, except that ADUs 750 and less aren't going to be, it's not going to be applicable to them.
And further, they describe some sort of proportionality to the primary residence, so...
For the ones larger than 750.
Correct, yeah, for the larger, so...
Can you help me understand impact fees? So are those designed to help defray some of the burden on, you know, the water and the traffic and the public in general from the increased density? the traffic and the public in general from the increased density that the triplexing of our single-family home zones is estimated to?
In my professional experience with impact fees, a traffic impact fee is not an unusual one. And what they would do is they would say that we calculate that we need to make the following roadway improvements, install this intersection, upgrade this intersection, put in traffic, and they'll have a list of lights, and then they'll look at the expected effect of different types of development in terms of traffic load on that intersection. And the county, for example, has that, and they divide the county up into zones, and they say, if you're within X distance of, or if you're in this zone, these improvements are deemed to be affected by the traffic that your improvements will generate, and therefore, we're going to create an impact fee based on anticipated traffic that you will pay as part and parcel of your project fee requirements. And the county does so, we don't.
And those impact fees are used to offset the impacts from the development on traffic, for example, also on parks. You see a school impact fee also.
Okay, those are all my general questions before I open it up to public comment. Does anybody else have general questions?
I'm sure I have more, but I can't think of them right now.
Okay, so I'm going to open this item up to public comments. Does anyone wish to make a comment?
Mark Valdominga, Fairfax. A couple of questions. There was a slide that said that the maximum rear setback was four feet. That's supposed to be minimum, right, on that slide? The one that's before this?
It would be a minimum of four feet, correct?
Okay. And then?
That's a max. It's maximum.
You can't require anything greater than four feet.
You can't, the state says you can't require a setback greater than four feet.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, and then another question I had is, it looks like ADUs can be up to 50% of the existing property? Is that correct?
Dwelling.
Dwelling, excuse me.
But we have.
Is there a size limit on an ADU?
Yes. So this proposal says 1,000, well, it has different ones. It's the, it's the 850, well, see, it's like a test, 850 for the efficiency or one-bedroom, right? And 1,000 for the two-bedroom. But we can't, what's the 800?
You can't limit it.
Well, that's, yeah, you can't, if you have FAR or something, lot coverage, you can't, it can't prohibit somebody from building at least an 800 square foot.
So my 600-something square-foot house, I could build an 800-square-foot ADU
Over the creek.
On my lot.
If it would fit and if you could meet setbacks.
Or convert an existing legal nonconforming use into an ADU, or tear it down and build it in the footprint of where it was.
Yeah.
So I have a question, Janet.
Yes.
And if you're adjacent to a creek, you can build it four feet away from the top of the creek bank. There's no setback from a creek? Yeah, just, I just want to verify that.
Is the property line the creek?
Yeah.
Well, isn't there?
There are, yep.
Doesn't the Army Corps of Engineers have something to say about that? Federal?
They only seem to care, well, so I know that fish and wildlife only cares about the channel now. They won't let you build.
I think that's, I think that needs to be researched, because there's also SEQA concerns with that, so.
SEQA exempt, though.
Well, right, but what I'm saying is for next to the creek, that might be something that needs more research.
Yeah, one of the things that we plan on doing is definitely taking individual cases like that and looking at them with.
It seems like we could create a, oh.
I'm sorry, we've left him sitting.
Sorry, Mark, do you have any more, Mark?
I have one more thing for clarification. I just kind of caught the end of this cutting down trees to put in your ADU, you don't need a permit. Am I correct on that?
Correct. It supersedes any discretionary, or negates any discretionary review which a tree permit is. So we've simply put in a standard that stipulates two-for-one replacement with a 36-inch box tree.
So you can take out a 450-year-old tree to put in your 800-square-foot unit?
We could have maybe a historic designation for anything over 50 years.
That might be something.
This is an excellent question. We should research, but yeah. This is one-size-fits-all legislation.
Heritage Oaks.
And that is, that is the problem. This is state legislation that's statewide, and it is a one-size-fits-all. And so if you have a discretionary permit where it would allow you to take out a tree or not, it would be discretion. You can't have that. You can't have any discretion in your ADU ordinance. It has to be only objective development standards, not subjective ones. And you cannot prohibit by means of things like FAR or perhaps even tree ordinances, someone from constructing at a minimum an 800-square-foot ADU, 16 feet tall, if they meet the setbacks, the four-foot setbacks.
So the primary thing is the setbacks, and you could have like four 400-year-old oak trees, and they would be gone. And so, yeah, you have to go plant eight trees, but considering we actually live more in a flood zone at least equally to a fire zone, and how much water trees absorb when it rains like the dickens out there, it seems pretty absurd.
Okay, thanks.
Mark, can you, oh.
Hi, Rick Kammer, Fairfax. You know, the one-size-fits-all designed for flatlanders, you know, we're not in flatland here. And I really appreciate what Commissioner Newton had said earlier in the question session where natural hazards need to play a bigger role in this. And the other discussion, the other item on the agenda, there is a landslide risk that's drawn out of the general plan. The general plan has already documented many of the natural risks that should be weighed in, because natural hazards, wildfire hazards, the urban interface, all these things play in, because you have a state, you know, mandate here that's going to let parking go rampant and development go rampant with very little restraint that would work in a flatland that doesn't work in Fairfax. And it's going to clog up the evacuations up in our steep areas, which are very well shown in the landslide risk maps. You know, there's a very good relationship between those two, and that document exists. And I really hope that Commissioner Newton and the commission in general runs with this one in terms of natural hazards. And we take into account nature and the safety, because this population, within half an hour, if it's a half a mile from a public stop, we know people are going to be parking. They're not just going to take public transit. So please consider, let's not clog up our evacuation routes anymore, and let's write something into our code that falls into that allowance to permit natural hazards as one of the elements to include in our ordinance in Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you. If no more public comments, I'm going to bring it, I'm going to close public comments and bring it back to the commission. But before I did that, I just wanted to know if anybody wanted to take a small break?
Soon, I would, but.
Let's do it now, then, before we get into discussion. I think that's an appropriate time, so five minutes. Okay, are we back on the record?
I did have a question, if we could, because we were talking about setbacks.
Have we officially closed the public hearing?
Yes. Well, was it official?
Yes, it was official.
Okay, so there is a 10-foot setback, right, for an ADU, a 10-foot front setback? What if the ADU is in the rear of the single-family? How do you measure a front setback?
Yeah, I mean, the 10-foot is from the property line, as a practical matter, if it's, if it's got a building between it and the front property line.
It doesn't apply, basically. There's no required space between an ADU and a single-family home.
Not if they build it right.
So let me ask one quick question on that with the 10. What's our normal front setback?
It varies. You have to keep in mind that it's a combined setback, and in discussing the idea of combined setbacks, which are typically over 20 feet, it was determined that that was too ambiguous. So we do have zoning districts with 10-foot setbacks, and we just said, let's just adopt that.
So two of our zones, RS six and RD 5.5-7, have a 6-foot front setback. But the RS 7.5 has a 10-foot front setback, so we're going with the 10.
And the multifamily as well.
So on the chart piece, on page three, there's a, there's a section after, at the end on page three, that says separate exterior entry slash access required, et cetera. Are those intended to be, are you asking us sort of whether those are intended to be parts of eight, nine, and 10 of the ordinances? Is that, is that a question? Or is that, is that where the, where the choices are right there?
The totality of the staff's recommended options, or options for consideration for inclusion, are in the colorful memo. So this is just informative. This is just a summary.
This is just a summary of the changes, I think, trying to do a table.
Can you explain, Ben, what this is a summary of? Because it's really confusing.
Yes, this just summarizes the proposed regulations. So it's just looking at various criteria, or size, parking, et cetera, and just saying, this is what the regulations would entail.
This table was helpful?
Yeah, yes.
In what way?
For me, it was helpful, because it clearly pointed out the key elements of the ordinance. Where did that go? I just had it.
I usually love tables, Ben, but I think it's because I probably, you guys emailed this to us after the packets were put in our box, or is this really just sprung on us tonight?
This was.
It was sprung.
This was completed this afternoon. The timelines on this were ridiculous.
I get you. But I don't get this. So I, could you please, so you've got ADU project type, and you've got lists garage conversion, converted space from the primary dwelling unit, converted space from existing accessory structure. So you've just tried to summarize for each type of different ADU
Right.
what the new law or laws mean with respect to that type of unit? And I'm supposed to absorb this? It's, it's three pages.
Well, as you can tell, I haven't completely absorbed all of it myself. I mean, we're, this is an effort to provide a little bit of a summary, rather than just give you the nine-page ordinance and say, give us your comments on that.
Well, I would like to kind of take another bird's-eye view, big-picture approach to my comments to you guys and my recommendations, if I might. As an attorney who's been practicing for 30 years, it is cray-cray to try to understand what you guys are putting in front of us.
Can you say, can you repeat that?
It's nuts. And the reason is, you know, there's no reference to the codes that we're no, the codes that we are relying on as the basis for the new ordinance. So you guys tell me, hey, these new laws that you don't identify, you just call them new laws, are amending these government code sections. I go onto Westlaw and pull up that government code section, and it says that it was last amended in 2017. I then Google all the different statutory changes to those government code sections, and I come up with 68, not 881. I walk in here tonight after spending hours and hours of going through this stuff, and I am not looking at the correct version. So when you guys present this to the town council, if you could do me a favor and include some cross-referencing to the actual language that you're now handing me, that we're basing this entire ordinance on, I think that we need to have that clarity. I think we need to say, this is because new section, which is attached to your packet, new section, Government Code 65882.2C4 says X, because this is a mess. And I am so frustrated from having pored through the wrong law that was amended later. I can't even hardly get over it.
Well, we were trying to, we know this is very complicated, and we were trying to make it simple. And the only thing we're trying to do.
Follow-up to that, is the one effective January 1, 2018? Is that what we're talking about?
No.
So I went on, this stuff was chapered, like, or just signed in October. So I went on the Ledge Info site and pulled up, and went through that process and pulled up 881 and saw where, you know, you had the law as amended. So I can understand, and that's where it was, had the lined out. So I can understand Mimi's frustration, because you wouldn't find this probably
No.
yet.
No, and what we were trying to do, we weren't trying to give you the laws, you know, the actual state statutes, the new ones, to have you go through those, because that's the part that is pretty confusing. So what we were trying to do was tell you that we have gone through the new state statutes that are effective January 1, 2020. And what I just handed you is off of Westlaw, and that is, what is it, .2? And it shows the amendments to that government code section from 881, specifically for 1.5 of 881, AB 881, show up there in dark. And so it shows you the old and the new, because it's modifying that particular government code section.
And I was on Westlaw today and didn't see this. So, you know, I'm not a newbie when it comes to pulling this up.
Right.
And so the fact that we have one copy that you're handing us now is not enough for the town council, is what I'm saying.
Well, I, what I, I don't, I didn't mean for you to have to go through the new state laws and to look at the actual statutes. What we were trying to do was make it simpler and say, here is a model ordinance taken from that and from some other things that are effective January 1, 2020. And. And it's what we believe will survive judicial scrutiny as far as being a state statute-compliant ordinance." And then, there are some things that if you do have such a state statute-compliant ordinance, you can insert, you have some degree of flexibility or customizing. And that's the list that Ben was sent you, the things that staff recommends you consider inserting into this model ordinance. And the model ordinance is one that we took and tried to make from the new state laws, not expecting that you would want to do that. Do you know what I'm saying?
I understand. I'm just trying to, you know, what I usually do when we have an ordinance, and we've got citations to government codes, is I double-check them. And here, we were talking about the amendment of these two government code provisions. And that alone was way too complicated for my puny brain. And I, once I got into reading AB 68, which is later apparently amended by 881...
Right.
I got a lot of the density of a lot of the changes that are in the proposed ordinance, and I understand where your template is coming from. What's frustrating to me is I'm trying to pay attention to detail. I'm trying to look at the minutia and make sure that before we send something up to the town council, it's really been sifted through. And, you know, to some extent, as you've got two lawyers up here, we can serve as a safety net for the work that you and your firm do for our town, and we definitely appreciate all your legal advice, because we're not professionals at this particular thing. But what we do have is legal training where we can look at things. The fact that neither Phil nor I had 881 is just frustrating, because now I have to go through and kind of, what I wanted you to do is accept some recommendations that I have for how you put a packet together for the town council that isn't going to leave them as frustrated as it left me. And, you know, you've got some lawyers, I don't know how long Peter will be there, but one lawyer at least there, who may be interested in making sure that he's understanding it. The combination of that and the fact that we're completely removing the entire code and replacing it with new language that dovetails occasionally with the existing code that we're getting rid of, means that we are jumping back and forth between this requirement here from this new legislation, that requirement from our existing code, and we're putting this Frankensteinian thing together that, to me, was very hard to follow. I would have liked, not a table the day of the meeting that I can't really digest, but rather something in the packet that shows the cross-reference to the new code section that this language is coming out of, and the reference to the existing ordinance that other language is coming out of. I almost see you could put comments in the margins of the template you have that just has the citation either to the government code provision, so that you can find it and say, "Yeah, this is because this is out of here." One of the things I had to do was kind of go through our definitions, which are slightly different from the code definitions, and figure out why we had slightly different codes in, or definitions, in this template than are in the code. And if that had been highlighted to me, I wouldn't have felt the need to go through with as much detail as I felt was appropriate.
I understand where you're coming from. Your normal way of doing things is not the way I expected that you would look at this, because I think that it is extremely complicated and difficult to do it the way you were trying to do it. And if you consider that we need to amend, which means repeal and replace, get rid of the existing code sections and put in something that, as a whole, stands alone by itself and could be, should be, hopefully will be, found to be compliant with state statute, should it ever be challenged, that's what I was trying to do. And so, I didn't expect you to take the existing code that's in the town code now and have any, look at it at all. I expected you just to look at what was submitted to you and consider it brand-new, starting from, you know...
But it doesn't dovetail with what the legislation says, because it includes all this stuff from our existing code, right?
Only inasmuch as the stuff from the existing codes is in state statute.
Correct. So, what I'm saying is, just looking at it in a vacuum doesn't help me understand how to critically analyze it. I need to understand it against the backdrop of both what we have historically said about ADUs, what we've traditionally looked at with the rest of our code, 15-foot versus 16-foot heights, and then understand how that traditional regulatory approach is impacted by this new legislation without just a broad brush stroke of, "Hey, stuff is impacted." I need to understand, and I frankly think the council will appreciate understanding the basis for the structure that you guys have put together in this template, because I think they want to think about it critically, even though we have not got a lot of time. Let me...
It's based solely on state statute. It's not based on our code.
Okay, since I was mentioned as the other lawyer on the panel, I kind of echo what Mimi said. I had a different take on it. I was willing to just not even look at the old ordinance and just concentrate on this, and hopefully it complied. And also, BBK, you know, trust you guys. But I could not, for me, it was I could not believe what I was reading is real. So, I tried to get the California Legislature, it's just one of those things, and I could only get the one effective 2018, from the CaliforniaLegislature.gov official website. They don't even have your latest version that you gave us tonight, which I see is, you know...
That's Westlaw.
Yeah, right. So, it was the frustration I share with Mimi, actually, as an attorney on the panel, for a different reason. I just, it just took me, like, what, is this China all of a sudden, or what, you know?
So, let me add to that comment. I appreciate kind of the urgency on this, but I agree with Mimi. When I look at, the first thing that I did was pull out our existing ADU ordinance and read through that to refresh in my mind what is current in the town. I also then pulled out from the legislature, you know, 881 and the section on there where you can see how it's redlining and changing the government code. So, I do that before I kind of then try and digest what is given to us. So, I agree with Mimi and Phil on that, even though I am not a lawyer, I am a paralegal, but, so, that's how I approach it. So, I disagree with the thought that, you know, you didn't want to burden us with kind of the ADU, and we're just going ahead with this template of an ordinance. To getting kind of the conversation and just throwing something out there for discussion, I think earlier, we talked about having the urgency ordinance and then kind of the regular non-urgency ordinance. I would like to throw out here a discussion of perhaps looking at just the urgency ordinance, including addressing the items that Ben gave us as far as, you know, the architecture and all that, and addressing how we want to look at that within that urgency ordinance, and then perhaps spending more time on the regular ordinance and not putting them together as a packet, considering all the questions and concerns that we have. So, I thought I'd throw that out here for the commission's discussion.
And so, since the urgency ordinance and the ordinance are duplicative, I guess the finer point question would be, is there an urgency ordinance that we could adopt that would essentially stay the state ordinance to allow us time to comment?
No.
Okay. So, if the answer is no, then I can make some recommended changes for what I would like to see.
Can you repeat that? The urgency ordinance as it is with what we would throw in here wouldn't be applicable to take us to one January, over one January?
No, no, no. What, maybe I don't understand your question, but the urgency ordinance takes effect January 1, okay? It's only one reading. It's at council only, and it's December, and takes effect January 1. So, that's what's in place. Usually, when you do an urgency ordinance, you accompany that with a regular ordinance. Regular ordinances, remember, take two readings at the council. This one would have to go planning commission, two readings at council, 30 days later, it's effective. And so, with that December reading, it would need another reading in January. It would be effective, say, mid-February, because the town council meeting is mid-January. So, mid-February. So, you have urgency ordinance in effect from January 1 to, say, you know, mid-February. Regular ordinance is then in effect from mid-February on until you modify it. And so, if the planning commission wants to really look at the ordinance and really consider different things, maybe in the list that, a list of optional things that could be included, could be inserted into the template, maybe there are other things, maybe you don't like some of those. If you really want to take several meetings and look at it, that's perfectly fine. But my recommendation would be that you let the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance go ahead, because you can then amend that regular ordinance that's in effect at any point in time. And so, if the planning commission looks at it in December, looks at it in January, continues to look at it into February, and then finally has something that they've crafted that want to send up to the council, and they hear it in maybe March or so, first read, second read in April, it's effective in May. It's effective in May. But in the interim, you have the urgency ordinance and you have the regular ordinance. That regular ordinance is belt and suspenders for that urgency ordinance. It's not necessary. We don't have to have a backup regular ordinance at all. But it's in case there is a challenge to the urgency findings and they fail, then you have a regular ordinance in place that came into effect, say, mid-February. And so, your window of not having anything other than state in place would be January 1 to mid-February, as opposed to if you didn't have that regular ordinance in place, it'd be January 1 until May or June or whenever your regular ordinance became effective. Do you see what I'm saying?
And I guess my concern is that we never revisit this.
Madam Chair, I could say this, that given the public safety concerns that are just in our face with this latest batch of legislation, I feel it highly likely we will be revisiting it, if that's the direction that your commission and the council gives us. You know, what else are we going to do? To the point about looking at the statutes, Lynda has 95 pages of maybe eight-point font of the state codes. And the state's intention is not to have local jurisdictions mul this over and, you know, give it the old detailed analysis. And of course, Marin Planning Commissions and councils do that. But the idea is, it's adopted in October, or it goes into law, and it takes effect in January 1. And it's 95 pages, and who knows what else is circling around that affects ADU regulations? And the state has passed other laws in 2018 and will more than likely pass more laws in 2020. It could be an exercise in futility, and especially if you're trying to digest this in a matter of days. We will provide this for you, Mimi, and you're welcome to read it. I mean, we were able to download it. But this is one of these things where teams of specialists in land use law, who basically the minute those, you know, probably before they took effect, because, you know, you get the, you hear that this is likely to be passed by Newsom, so you start to look at it. I mean, as with most statutes, there's confusion, there's inconsistencies. So, this is where we do rely on a law firm such as BBK. This is the advantage we have of having the resources they have. I can say this, I have been discussing this at length with other planners. I have seen numerous PowerPoint slides. There's nothing in this that is inconsistent with everything I've read. So, it's one of those things where, you know, God bless you, if you want to take the time to look through 95 pages of eight-point font and try to make sense of it, and then maybe ask questions to our legal team, but to expect somehow that they're going to come up with a concordance between the existing ordinance and the specific state statutes, where there may be two or three that really don't sync. You already pointed out the definition issues, which is another problem they have, is they come up with new terms that may or may not be well-defined. To me, as a professional, I rely on their expertise to do that. Now, that's not to say that your input, I mean, I've heard lots of things tonight that I go, "Oh, we need to look at that better." And that's, you know, well and good. And to the extent that you continue to provide that advice, and we go into 2020 and say, "Let's look at the regular ordinance and address X, Y, and Z," that's a great idea. But I recommend that your commission provide the direction in terms of the objective standards that were in the pretty memo, the color memo, the latest version that I provided you. Get this to the council in a timely manner, so that we have something on the books. Have that back-up to this, because, again, this is something that is fraught with the potential for legal challenges, so get that regular ordinance going, too. And add that to our work program for 2020, where we continue to look at it. As I've said, we are very concerned about this, particularly the safety issues, and will not let that issue drop. So, how far we get with it, we don't know, but we'll continue to do that.
So, let me ask my fellow commissioners, is there any concurrence or thoughts from the rest of you about separating out the urgency and the regular one?
I'm glad you asked.
Thank you.
The problem I see with not adopting the regular ordinance with the urgency ordinance is that it leaves the town open for three to four months at a minimum, where the possibility exists that we would have no ordinance in effect and fall back to the state's standard basic requirements without being able to incorporate any of our standard...
FAR and lot coverage.
Exactly. We do have some town standards as opposed to state standards that we could lose if we don't have an ordinance piggybacking as soon as the emergency ordinance expires.
Anyone else? Comments?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez and...
Frigoso.
Frigoso. And Ben, I think we need to get on with the, what I would like to do really is take a look at the memo of November 21 and those standards, and see how we could weave those into the latest draft ordinance we got tonight, and get on with it, and just say, "Okay, it's duplicated." And then, like you've said, then we can amend next year if we get a chance, you know? I'd hate to see us not have our ordinance. That would be, to me, more of an emergency than to nitpick everything we could nitpick. I mean, I've taken a look, frankly, at the memo. I've taken a look at where those things plug in, and I'm kind of saying to myself, "Yes, you know, that's, that looks like a good, let's plug them..." yes, you know, that's, that looks like a good, let's plug them all in.
Okay, then if that's kind of how everybody feels, let's take a look at the optional changes.
So we're looking, what Commissioner Green is talking about is looking at the proposed language in this, in the multi-colored document.
Two-sided, multi-colored memo of November 21 from Ben. And that kind of jives with the new copy of the new version of the dual ordinance that we got tonight.
So let me ask a question because we didn't have a chance to ask this. We had a copy of the proposed code in our packet. And then you left us on our dais, a new copy, but there's nothing on here that, you didn't really explain what...
So the red lines seem to have a bar on the margins. So on page two, it looks like number seven, natural person, got an extra quotation which was missing before.
I do have some specific...
Oh, and then page four on E1, other zone. And page six, the bottom two and three with the FAR requirement. There's some red language on the top of the next page. So suddenly we don't have the bar. Oh, there it is. Minimum open space. And then down at C on the bottom of seven, off-street parking. That looks like the only changes.
So is this just clarifying and not, you know, grammatical or clarifying and not really changing what we have? Because I haven't read through this.
This is basically a typo edit version.
All right.
Okay, so I have a few specific questions. So on the memo, the two-sided memo of November 21, I think we've already clarified the first part, the F1B.
The F1B, but not C4A.
And the C4A.
Did we?
Did we clarify that? And then I have to ask, what happens with DB2, which apparently, I mean, yeah, D, capital B, Roman little 2, which is apparently on page three? Does that replace the two total floor areas, 800 square feet or smaller, with the language? Has a front yard setback of at least 10 feet?
Good question. No, it's additive. So this simply says, we're adding a front yard setback after the discussion or the description of the two, the side and the rear setbacks. So the II becomes III.
Okay, fine. That's clear. And I guess the same under DD2, the same idea?
Correct.
Okay, got that. Thank you.
So 17048010, the first one you did here, you're just correcting what you gave us previously back to the original draft ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
It is a bit of a conundrum, but you know, if you, when you do court hearings, you just get things thrown at you sometimes.
Can I ask a question about this while you guys are flipping pages? On page two of your colorized memo, FA in terms of the replacement of two-for-one of trees planted, can we add anything about native trees here or adding something about water conservation or?
It does have a native, the replacement tree shall be native.
But that's the replacement trees, not general landscaping. Can we not address general landscaping other than trees?
Black line, clearly understood, as simple as it gets. That's what we're faced with.
Okay.
And can I add on to clarification from Norma's comment there about, so this was only in relation to protected trees? So is protected trees then referenced somewhere else? And so that's all that...
Yes, the protected trees are defined in the tree ordinance. Maybe we need to include a definition. We'll include, we'll transfer that protected tree definition into the ADU ordinance. But it's currently in our tree regulations.
Okay. And so we can't add anything about other type of trees that aren't protected?
You could.
But maybe that would go, but maybe that would be part of the regular, the future ordinance and not the urgency.
Well, we want to put criteria in for those eight, nine, and 10 in both architectural requirements, landscape requirements, and historical protections. We could potentially add historical protections of trees and structures over a certain age.
And I guess when I looked at the landscape piece, there shall be a two-to-one replacement planting with 36-inch box-sized native trees for the removal of protected trees. I mean, I think if we're going to do some kind of landscaping, we should give more thought to it than this. That, and that, to me, should be something that we look at as we look at something more permanent, as we look to changes. Because there's, you know, there should be a lot of thought going into that in relation to our tree ordinance. And I'm not sure that I would necessarily agree with, you know, I mean, we're adding new things in here that we don't have, I don't think, in the existing tree ordinance. I don't think we have two-to-one replacements and things like that, do we? So, I mean, we're just coming up with new things here with no thought to kind of something broader.
It was just trying to have something in place of the discretion to say, no, you can't take that tree out.
Yeah, again, it's a reaction to this grossly oversimplified edict from the state and to encourage people to think long and hard before they eliminate a protected tree. But you're right, yeah, in terms of the whole realm of landscaping and screening, we would have to put that through the filter of objective standards with no discretion, et cetera, et cetera. And we could explore that.
I also have some questions about F8 on the bottom of page one, which I guess are your try at the architectural restrictions. Materials and colors of the exterior walls, roof, and windows and doors must match. The appearance and architectural design of those of the primary dwelling. And I guess I want to pose this question to my fellow commissioners, is that consistent with keeping Fairfax quirky?
Let me ask a question on that. Do you delineate between attached and not attached ADUs with that statement?
No, if it's an expansion, our consideration is to say it should be architecturally consistent within a property with the existing. And I believe that's somewhat consistent with what the commission has done, where they've considered certainly additions, but even detached structures. I know your commission has mulled that over and generally said, yeah, we like to see some sort of harmony and consistency.
And that also would apply to the roof slope must match that of the primary dwelling? If you're looking at a detached ADU?
Yeah, it's basically a mini-me version of the primary residence.
I'd like to add a comment to that. I've been, that's been on my list. If you only have a 15, 16-foot height limit, it's very difficult to match the roof slope. You probably more than likely are going to have to have a flat roof or a mansard, you know, that's only like a partial, partially sloped, and the inside is flat. So I don't, I have trouble trying to dictate what the roof slope would be. I think the, maybe we can expand A to talk about the roof should be compatible or some type of language.
Or you can look at this from the standpoint that you're putting this in here just to get it through the process. And these are going to be some more of the items that you look at when we do bring, look at this in 2020, which is what I would like to do to make those changes.
Can I add another point? Because the roof slope could trigger height variances. And I don't think that we want to do that. So that's why I have an issue with the roof.
I think what Stafford tried to do are come up with concrete measurable standards, and in harmony, isn't going to cut that. You know what I mean? So I think this is an attempt at giving us something concrete and measurable so that we couldn't be accused of having some sort of discretionary application of, hey, that's in conformance with. I mean, my natural reaction to the matchy-matchy nature of this is I'd rather turn it upside on its head and say, it can't be matchy-matchy. And that's measurable, just as measurable as it has to be matchy-matchy. You know what I mean? But to me, if we're going to have, let's say, my 650-ish square feet, and there's a new ADU on that property, you guys don't want necessarily the matchy-matchy one that looks exactly like the primary dwelling. Part of the nature of what makes our Fairfax character, our Fairfax character, is that we aren't all matchy-matchy. And if we're talking about an 800-square-foot ADU next to a 600-square-foot primary dwelling, I don't know if matchy-matchy is how we want to litigate or require it, even if we're saying to ourselves down the road, we're going to change that. Like you said, Cindy, down the road when? And why aren't we doing now what we want to do? Like, we can sit here and say, what do we want to do? Do we want matchy-matchy? Do we not want matchy-matchy? Maybe we don't want to say it either way.
Through the chair. This is the line item where I suggested that we go to our general plan, where we have some very fine language about consistency with the architectural character and style. Lynda, you're shaking your head. Is that too subjective?
It's not, yes.
This, I guess, when, what motivated this architectural attempt is to say, in a situation where that which has formerly been carefully crafted to fit not only the site but the neighborhood, and maybe it's eclectic even within the lot, maybe it isn't, but your commission, you know, delivers a home run, you know, every time with the final design. And we've seen that, where, you know, most things get adjusted somewhat. Now we've lost that. Now it's staff people saying, okay, here's the plans. The alternative, I mean, maybe it is a good idea to say, oh, well, let's go with, you know, brutal post-modern style up against this craftsman-style main house, that it just happens to be quite a bit bigger than. But we felt like, on the whole, if we're eliminating any element of discretion, that the safe bet is to simply say, match existing. And then at least you can point to the public and say, look, it matched the existing.
Maybe the problem is the word "match." Can we say preserve the existing character of what is there? You still can't say that?
How about a real subjective standard? We say the roof slope must be compatible with that of the primary dwelling instead of match?
Compatible is subject to...
Too much. But match is subject to it also.
Why don't we delete B?
Without exceeding a certain height, perhaps we could add. I mean, I hear Laura's angst. You know, we, our roof height is one of our prize regulations that we have here because of our nature and all that.
But we also have, we also have a height limit of 16 feet, right? So why don't, what about the idea of leaving A? I know it's matchy-matchy. And deleting B? And then, you know, again, stuff that we're gonna, because I know I want to see this come back, because I want to see it from the public safety and traffic flow aspect of it to address those things. What about if we left A, deleted B?
I'm fine with that.
What about C and D?
Well, maybe you can do a show of hands for eliminating B so we can figure out if that's the way the majority of you are going?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Do you want a show of hands for A too, I guess? A as well?
Well, I think you kind of have to have A.
We have to have A.
Okay, good.
Okay, what about C?
C and D we keep.
C?
C? Okay, everyone's good with C. Great. D? I think it's because we have to let them build four feet from the property line. And so we have a lot of houses that...
Then they should say from four feet, not 30 feet.
Well, again, what we've considered is that if we're going to be having these structures that have zero input from the public, which is a drastic change from what we've ever done, and it's a four-foot setback, that you will have these clear story elements that if, privacy being one of the things we can preserve as an objective standard, the way you do that is you say your plate height has to be a minimum of six feet, your lower sill height, rather, has to be six feet from the finished floor.
So I'd be in support of D if 30 was changed to four?
Well, but if it's five feet, then they can have a window that looks out on your neighbor.
You are now.
No, because we have bigger size.
Detached accessory structures.
Yeah, but a detached accessory structure doesn't normally have windows and things in it.
We've seen all kinds of accessory structures that we've approved here with windows like that.
But we would have approved those as variances.
Or, right.
Conditional.
Some discretionary review.
I'm not, you know, I wouldn't...
Well, 30 feet is a long way.
Pick a number.
I'm, well, actually, I mean, I'm, again, if we're looking at this again in the future, leave it in there, and then let's address it as part of the changes we want to make. And that gets this through the process.
What 30, what number would you throw out there, other than four? I mean, it can't be less than four, right?
But four does the setback require? How, so how would you feel about 10? I mean, we have some houses that are built, they were built in 1920. They're on the property line. So if someone tries to put an ADU in less than 10 feet, I don't know.
There's another issue that's egress, like safety issues. You can't, if it's a bedroom and it needs an egress, you have to have, the sill height cannot be higher than 42 inches off the ground. So this doesn't meet code.
Well, it would if they...
We could put 42 inches, but I don't think we can't be this...
Well, their egress would have to be in a direction that isn't less than a certain distance to the property line. And again, the 30 feet was simply to say that if you're going to put in a structure with nobody say so, that the first thing the neighbors know about it is that, here come the contractors, and they start banging nails. And they're saying, what the hell's going on? And, oh my God, here's my impacts on my privacy. And we say, well, we actually have this standard that we think does a decent job of protection, protecting it. I thought about the egress aspect, and I thought, well, that's a decision where you're putting your bedroom, that you could put your bedroom so that it faced the interior of the property, and then you could have your lower, or you could have an egress door that has, that is a solid door. It doesn't necessarily have to be a window. It could be going out to a porch.
Let me ask a clarifying question here because I'm getting a little confused. In what circumstances would you have a second-floor window on an ADU? Would this be if I have my two-story house and I add on two stories to it in addition, right? That would be the only time that you would have, you wouldn't have your garage or your... That would be the only time that you would have, you wouldn't have your garage or your...
Detached accessory structure being more than 16, correct. Unless it were an existing two-story structure, detached structure, which they could replace it and go with an ADU. Another aspect is somewhere between four and, Laura, you can help me here, I think it's five feet, the, the building codes really don't like openings, and especially not windows. You have to have special tempered glass, and if it's used as an egress window, it has to, there's provisions regarding fire safety there, so. But 30 feet, I, I think I've got that from Mill Valley. So if, if some decision is made that it's some number less than that, I just feel it would be useful to not have somebody's structure attached, two-story structure looming over a property line with their window where they could look right out of it.
I'm fine with the 30 feet for now.
Um, I don't know, I, I think that, I think there's a problem with this one, so I, I don't, I don't think I support that.
So would you be okay with the 30 feet, or is it the other parts of it that you have concerns?
I just think it needs more thought. It's just, I don't think we should put the, the number in the building code, it's, it's anything less than three feet with residential, you can't have a, you can't have a window at all.
Right.
No openings are allowed.
But three to five is.
I mean, commercial, it's like five and 10 feet, you know, they've got restrictions. So there's, there's more latitude with a residential, but there's no, there's no windows allowed when you're less than three feet from the property line in the building code. But the 42-inch, I just, I think that, I think Michelle's comment was, I started thinking about that too, I mean, we're not enforcing in other areas of the code, I think we just need to think more about that one.
Okay, one thing I would caution is that to, we need a recommendation from five commission members to have an affirmative vote on any of this. And so I would strongly suggest we find some sort of compromise, whether it's 10 feet or we take it out entirely, which I don't recommend, because then we lose any privacy aspects. We could also say, I'm just throwing this out, it would have to be obscured glass if it were less than a certain distance, which allows us, it's, again, it's a, it's a, it's a objective standard, and it basically says you can't look out the window.
I think that gets too complicated, though. I mean, if we're going to go with something like this, I would just have, I mean, we need to have something. I agree with Ben on that, because I don't want something four feet from a property line that's got windows in it. So I think in the interim, until we relook this, I think it, it probably makes sense to have some distance from a property line.
And so what does the code require in terms of setbacks for second stories or other clear story requirements or window, what is that now?
It's subjective. We, we make a determination based on potential privacy impact. So we, we have a combined setback, we have a minimum setback. Linda, what is it? It varies, like six feet or something, but we, we have in the past, since my short tenure here, required plate heights to be above a certain height. There's one on Cascade where they ended up, they had their egress facing the rear, towards nobody in particular, and the side window had a requirement for the plate height or obscured glass, it was something to preserve privacy, so.
Would you be, would it make sense to be 30 feet, but then not address the sill height? Does that make sense?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Is sill height governed by the ADU ordinance or by building code? Because sill height for a bedroom is health and safety.
If it's an egress window, it's 42 inches, so that's a building code requirement if they're using that area as a, for their legal egress from a bedroom.
So that's covered, even if we say.
Well, it's a design issue, though. It's basically directing design through your requirements. In terms of other, other than that, it is, it is a privacy issue which is planning. So as, and as I said, it's sort of a clear story requirement, and it's not atypical, and your commission has done that in the past. We haven't said you've got to be 30 feet back, but we've never run into a problem where, where we've, you know, had a structure where somebody can put a window wherever they want, potentially.
Sure, this can be 30 feet back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
You've got five feet.
Can we, can we say anything like, or otherwise as required by the building code? Can we say anything like that in this?
Well, there are a general provision that says you have to comply with the building code provisions, right?
Right, again, we're trying to, much as this, we're trying to, in simplest possible terms, direct design, in this case, to preserve privacy. So the idea is, somebody says, I need my egress window, because I want to put my bedroom on this side of the detached, or the attached ADU, and we say, you're going to have to move your bedroom so that you're not, you don't get that required egress window within that distance to the property line. But, I, I mean, anything would help. So if it's 10 feet or 20 feet, unless they raise the height, as I said, the obscured glass is a, is a, is a backup that would say that it's not, you're not going to be looking out that window.
I have a recommendation on D to revise it to say, all second-story windows facing, and I'm sorry, since we're getting rid of B, I guess this'll be the new C. All second-story windows facing the side or rear yard of a property adjoining the side or rear yard of an adjacent property, and located six feet or less from the property line shall either have a minimum lower sill height of at least six feet above the finished floor, comma.
Or meet the building code.
No.
Or obscured glass.
Or obscured glass, comma, as long as such conforms with the building code. Something like that.
I'm fine with that.
Do you want us to come back to you, Michelle?
I'm not confident we've been requiring that on other things coming in. So right now, I'm a no.
Phil?
I'm, I'm good on Mimi's suggestion, and with keeping in mind the fact that this ordinance, this ordinance has to be completely self-contained and isn't going to much refer to any other Fairfax ordinances, I think we need that. And I think Mimi's language is terrific.
I'm, um, you know, to move this through, I don't like the six-foot. I would like something further away, but I think you do have the obscure glass, and to move this forward, this might be something we look at when it comes back, but this way we get it through.
I, um, go ahead.
I mean, I'm thinking, I mean, if we want to put a number on there, maybe, maybe 10's, I think, a reasonable number.
I'm good with 10.
But 30 feet, I think, is, is too, is too large.
Are we good with 10?
Okay, so can you see a show of hands for 10?
I'll vote for 10.
Show of hands.
And is that with or without the obscure glass?
Obscured glass.
Now, what about the two-for-one replacement plan? How do we want to address landscaping? Do we want to leave that out for now and address it when we get back?
Leave it in.
Whoops, Michelle?
Um, well, I'm, I actually think that this whole section regarding environmental issues should be beefed up, and so I'm a little hesitant to just address trees, but if it were to be trees, I'd rather go down to 24-inch box until we can better figure out what we're dealing with. In other words, I want to add ridge, flood, creek, I don't know, we're talking about other things.
I mean, I, I, when I first read this, I thought that seemed too large, but then once I heard Ben's re, you know, exclamate, then it made sense, because we want to discourage people from doing the protected trees, because normally, like, 15-gallon would be the minimum size, but we do want to make it, we want to make it difficult, you know, for the people to think about not moving.
When, when you talk about a 15-gallon, because here we're talking about inches versus gallons, so when you talk about like 15 gallons, how does that relate to like a 36-inch box or a 24-inch box?
Well, they're usually much smaller, so that's what I'm saying. Normally, in landscape installations, when we have them go through the board, they're usually a minimum size of the 15-gallon. So a 36-inch tree is, is significantly large and very expensive.
So I guess the question becomes, is that, you know, reasonable when we look at how we normally view replacements in the normal course of things?
Normally, we get to decide whether the design is a good design despite tree removals. Now, we have no input on that. They basically say, and God knows, somebody might say, you know what, I've got that 400-year-old redwood tree that I've been wanting to take out for years, I'm going to do an ADU and smoke that thing.
I doubt that would happen, but that, you raise another quest, question with vegetation management plans, so do those come into this at all? Or is that part of when we look at this down the road, how do we address that along with the other fire and public safety? Because, you know, you're, you're, that could be a concern, so just add that to the list.
Yeah, the, yeah, VMP is fire, so that's an interesting question. We don't, we don't have an answer.
I think if, if, we would be more likely to require a 24-inch box size than a 36-inch box size. And, I mean, are there any statistics on what we have required in terms of replantings?
Usually, when people go to the tree committee for a large heritage oak or redwood tree, they're told no, and they redesign. We don't have that ability, so I think it's a good, I think it's a good condition.
Well, then, why aren't we more specific to say then, if it's a heritage tree of X diameter, then it's got to be 36-inch. If it's below X diameter, then it's 24.
Because I would like to prevent the removal of the heritage with a definitive standard that sets a no on a particular age.
I'm, I'm in support of that, actually, and I realize that, that they don't want to do that, but I actually, that's what my recommend, when we finally get to some recommendations versus the sheet, I want to go bold. Like, okay, I hear that they're saying it might be overturned, I, I don't have clarity over that, but I want to go bold, and I have a bunch of recommendations on that.
So let, let me ask another que, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I just, I want you to pass around this list. You have a list of heritage trees, and their different circumferences depend on the type, depending upon the type of tree, so you can't just set it to one.
So again, that.
No, but we can use the list.
You can use your list, yes, you can use your list, but if you try to just say 24 inches, that's not going to work. Okay.
So can you then just take that one section of that and include it?
I think we incorporate that list.
So what we're, are we splitting between protected tree and heritage tree, or are we just saying, use heritage trees?
Where are you seeing a definition?
I think there's two different things. One of the things we've got is, we've got eight, nine, and 10 that are blank on page eight, and architectural requirements doesn't really apply to trees, landscape requirements could, and historical protection could, so I think we put it under both.
I would say we'd want to incorporate this table into the ordinance rather than referring to it under the section it's under. So I think that would be an important thing to do, especially as we know the ordinance is supposed to be self-standing.
And I think I misspoke that maybe your ordinance doesn't call it heritage, but I was saying heritage, when maybe your ordinance is something else, but I'm with them.
Well, actually, the definition is heritage, and then we have additional protected trees, but probably heritage might be the better term with the list that we have.
So we have protected trees that aren't heritage trees then, right?
Correct, and you'd address those under landscaping, and then the heritage ones under historical.
So I guess it, again, we're, to me, we're getting back to delving into a lot of detail that we want to delve into when this comes back to us, versus putting something in there that it can get forward.
No, right now, you're not going to give the town council a draft ordinance that says architectural requirements insert strictly objective town-specific standards here.
No, I, I, I understand that, but what I mean is, all of these things we want to flesh out at some point when this comes back to us. So are we saying that for the landscape aspect, we're going to come up with this table and get real detailed on this, for, for this process, and then not everything else?
My recommendation is for the landscape requirements, we stick to the protected tree situation and talk about the two-to-one replacement planning with the 36 or 24-inch box, whatever we decide upon, native trees for the removal of protected trees. But then when we look at the historical protection section, we incorporate the specific table that defines the heritage trees, and make those a separate objective standard for that category of quote-unquote heritage versus protected, which would be under the landscape. So if you had a protected species that was less than the size, it would be subject to the landscaping standard, the two-to-one requirement now, and maybe we can add on to that in the future. But for the moment, leave in that for 9A, and then add 10A that says similar, you know, but just has a prohibition without, you know, a variance for removal of any of these heritage trees.
So if we're going to go that route, I think landscape requirements and historical protections here are two different things, and I think anything related to trees should be under landscape. And when we look at historical protections, we're really talking about buildings and like the.
No, no.
No, I, I.
And the way this is, we're talking about historical protections of buildings in accordance with the California Register of Historic Resources. I think all of the tree stuff should be under landscape.
I, I agree, and, and, and for, not that I don't think heritage trees aren't historical, they are, for sure, but then we, if we call them historical, then we have this problem of registering in the California Register of Historic Resources, which has to be done, I believe, under even the new state statute that might exempt historical buildings or structures, let's say, maybe trees. But I think it's clearer to keep trees under landscaping that keeps them natural, rather than having to have them somehow qualify under the Register of Historic Resources, because I could see an argument in court, you know, can you imagine? Can you imagine trying to prove that a tree should be registered under, or should have been, and the state made an error not allowing us to register this 600-foot redwood under historical resources, you know, code? So I think we should keep them for that reason, keep them safer, more likely to keep them safe under landscape than this overlay of historical things which ought to be buildings, and we got to get on that too, by the way.
Is the 881 have any reference to the National Historic Protection status? Is the 881 have any reference to the National Historic Protection status?
It talks about his, the historical registry related to buildings, but I think that's all it speaks to. Doesn't speak to landscaping or vegetation at all.
The problem is, I've been through registering buildings under this code, and it is difficult. You have to have, and it, it really is buildings. I don't know of any trees that are involved or any other natural aspects, except maybe a boulder that was there to you, you know, to tie off the horse of General Custer or something. That might be. But this is, this is something that's a process we need to go through. We should have gone through it years ago. But I, I, just to save the trees, I think, keep them out of the historical category.
Get back to you in a second. I'm just going to look at first.
The, the other aspect, too, is we have defined criteria that already exist in the town code for heritage trees. We have descriptions of permits that are required for alterations of trees, which are also defined. So in essence, that's the protected tree. And we'll further define that when we go to the council. If we were to say, if we were to start to establish some sort of historical designation for landscape materials, or for trees, let's just say trees, we would have to come up with our own criteria very quickly for it to make sense. And it would be something that nobody else uses. So I, I, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Green in that we have provisions that define the resource that we're trying to protect as they're commonly understood. And if we try to apply historic criteria to trees, we're going to be doing something that nobody else does, and we haven't done yet.
So I agree with keeping vegetation or trees in, in the landscape section. Is there any kind of specific wording? Or how do you want to approach the, the landscape piece if we're going to go that route and keep historical for buildings?
Well, so for F9A, there shall be a two to one replacement planning. Have we decided we like 24 inch box size or 36 inch box size, native trees for the removal of protected trees? Do we have thoughts on 36 versus 24? Should we have a show of hands of anyone who approves of 36 more than 24?
Do we want to go with, I mean, raise hands for 36?
Sure. Now raise hands for 24?
So right now.
There can't be a flexible option here, right?
Right now, the state law. It says we, we cannot apply our tree ordinance to the removal of trees if someone wants to build an accessory dwelling unit. So the only thing that is going to make people think twice about cutting down a large heritage tree and putting an ADU there, right, if it's out of the view of their back windows and there's the redwood tree, and so they want to cut it down, is if it's going to be expensive to replant two trees, or if they're going to have difficulty finding enough room on the rest of their property to plant that large of a size.
How about what Phil just suggested off mic, which was require it be the same size, two to one?
I like that. I hope that works.
I don't understand why you're all laughing.
You won't be able to find that size.
You can't replace time.
Yeah, so it'd be very hard, but it's a concrete measurable standard.
So let, let me, let me ask, let me ask this question related to, you can't replace time. And if I've got, I've got, I've got the redwood tree that's got a six foot diameter and I can't replace it, right? Does that run into concern, does that run into a concern that we're blocking ADUs on some lots and we're putting up roadblocks? Because there is some language related to that. So it's just a question I have. How would that be viewed?
I think you have to be reasonable. It has to be reasonably attainable. You know, maybe it's going to cost a lot, but it is something that could be done.
Okay, so the two to one replacement, 36 inch, this is why I'm going with 36 inch, because, you know, hey, bigger is better, right? We're going to, if you're going to have to pay more for 36.
Staff.
In terms of trees. And, and taking into account greenhouse gases.
Okay, you got it.
Now, for the heritage trees, though, how do you write this in a way that doesn't say it's an absolute prohibition if you're tying, you know, don't remove the oak with the diameter greater than what's on that list?
Yeah, at that point, you would be potentially prohibiting construction of an ADU. So I don't think you could say you can't do it. It's just saying if this, then that.
Maybe we had to do a 10 to one instead of two to one. Seriously, what is to protect, you guys pulled two to one out of a hat, right?
It has to be reasonable and reasonably attainable.
Yeah. Reasonable, given the heritage nature of the tree you just removed.
Given the space on your lot where you're going to plant these trees.
Okay, but we're not putting a size. We're just saying a number. It could be a little skinny redwood. Well, no, because like your time will make them bigger.
The, the hope is that if they did follow through with that, that you would have, you would enjoy the, number one, the, the impacts. The small trees tend, you call them lollipop trees, because, you know, they, they look good in a few years, but they don't look so good putting them in. So the idea is that you would have an immediate visual impact tree to replace the stature of these protected trees.
So I would suggest that we go with it as written, and maybe that's something that we look at in research to see if we can make it stronger when we relook this, I keep saying that, we relook this ordinance.
We should be looking at next year's chair to make sure that they follow up on this.
I'm sure we'll remind next year's chair.
Problem I have with 36 inches is that it was mentioned that it is significantly more expensive than a 24 inch. So, you know, we're supposed to be trying to also foster ADRs. ADUs, I mean. And so I'm, that's why I'm not with the 36 inch, because it's, I don't know what significantly more expensive might mean. Is it thousands of dollars of more?
Yeah. Well, what I would argue is the town, without these draconian new statutes, is doing 10 ADUs a year. So we're doing a pretty good job of fostering ADUs. And some of these are going to come in as ADU, JADU, and primary residents. So I think we're probably doing a pretty good job of fostering it already.
And I don't have a problem with the protection of the protected trees. We're not talking about, yeah, we're, we're talking about protected trees, which have a certain little higher status. And, you know, I agree that, as I said before, this is a balance, right, between the crisis of, you know, affordable housing that the state's facing and trying to, as they say, thread the needle to make sure that we aren't undercutting the beautiful resources and the quality of our lives.
So does the ordinance for the protected trees have a particular size that's protected on that tree? Or is it like all bays? So it could be a one inch skinny?
No.
Okay, redwood. Could it be a one inch skinny redwood, and then they got to do a 24 or 36?
No, all, all the trees, all the, the listed heritage trees have varying size, which depends on their growth rate. And then the definition of a tree for which you would have, it's, it's protected under the tree alteration statutes is 12 inches in diameter. So you could say effectively it's, or excuse me, four inches circumference of 12 inches. So that would be the protected tree. Right. Well, right now, it's 36 inch box, which is probably like that.
Does box refer to the root system or to the?
It's, it's the size of the box in which the tree's planted.
So we're talking, we're not talking the circumference of the tree trunk.
No.
We're talking the circumference of the root ball inside the box that you put on the truck to ship the tree somewhere.
Right. A protected tree starts at. Yeah, existing. It would probably be comparable to that.
I think that our goal of, we, we were thinking, we were talking, oh, a heritage tree is going to be like that. And so I don't know that we're thinking the same thing.
Well, if your commission would like to limit it to heritage trees, we do have our list of heritage trees.
I would just go with what we've got now.
What would, what would a 400 year old redwood be talked about in terms of its box? I mean, so what is that, a 100 inch box or something? Not possible, right?
Could I, um, could I go to, back to kind of like basics on this and sort of take a different tack?
Can, can we finish up on the, on the trees? So we have that section done? And then go back to the front part? I'm okay with it as it's written for now. Anybody else?
I'm good with it, with the 36 inch box.
I, I agree. And then we revisit it later.
All right.
All right. So I'm going to go like page by page through the version that you guys put in my box. And maybe we can just kind of take turns. On page one, I don't really have anything.
Are we looking at the urgency?
No, I'm starting from the staff report on page one.
Okay. I'm just going to go to the urgency ordinance.
Well, I'm going to go through this, and I've got a lot to go. So you might want to follow me here.
I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question before you start on that? I meant to ask it before. ADUs, do we count them now in our arena numbers? We do.
Yes, we do.
Because there was something in there that talked about you'd be able to, maybe it was the BBK thing or something, you'd be able to count them. But I thought we already counted them. So now, when we go and put, do we count JADUs?
Yes, I believe so. Linda, you'd have to confirm that, but that's a.
Sorry, JADUs and ADUs. But remember, if you don't have any rent control, they don't account, they don't, won't count them towards your affordable unless you can somehow prove that they're actually being rented for an affordable amount. So like both, the last two years, we've sent out a questionnaire, right, to ask people what, how much they charge. Two years ago, we were more successful than this year. This year, I didn't hear back from anybody. Last year, last year, I heard back from more people, so.
So they're just counted as, would they then by default be counted just as? Okay.
And we could also ask them to fill out an annual survey to tell us what the rental prices are. We, we couldn't require it, but we could ask that to potentially secure some of the low income units, which is always a challenge.
So in the staff report on page two, there is a discussion about environmental review. And at the end of the first paragraph on page three, before the list, there's a statement that says, "The town council finds that none of the exceptions to the use of the class three exemptions set forth in the State SEQA Guidelines, Section 15300.2, apply here. Specifically, the town council finds that the ordinance will..." block, dot, dot. And it was just struck me as odd to see that language in the middle of a staff report. And I was hoping you could clarify that for me.
That should be the planning commission finds. So it's, it's.
Well, this is the staff report. So again, this isn't the recommendation from the planning commission. This is you guys. And I'm trying to understand, is this your recommendation for us to make these findings? Or is this you making these findings? Or are you telling us the town council made these findings?
It's a recitation by your commission regarding SEQA, the environmental review aspect. So we're saying.
So you want us to put this in our resolution, these findings in our resolution number 2019-20?
Yes.
So there I see them. Section one.
Section one.
Okay. All right. So I have questions about these findings. But I'm going to get to them because I'm going page by page and I'm not there yet. But I am there because I'm on page three. The planning commission, I guess, will find, hopefully, that the ordinance will not result in the construction of ADUs or JADUs within a particularly sensitive environment, because these accessory structures will necessarily be built on a lot already developed with a primary dwelling. Are you telling me that there are no existing primary dwellings in the town of Fairfax that are not already built in sensitive environments?
That's not the point to SEQA, though. The point to the SEQA exemption is that the environment is already built out. It's not a clear, open space where they will be building. It's on an existing developed property.
But some of these won't be, some of these potentially, because I had read that, and then I had to kind of look a little bit at the SEQA piece, because all of this talked about that these were going to be on properties that were already built out. So primarily had a, had a dwelling unit already on it. And my thought was, if we have an unimproved lot, like the one on Alima or other ones, that haven't been built on, those don't have improvements on them. So how does that, when we're just restricting this to, in the numbering, that we're restricting this to lots that already have something built on them unless the prior paragraph talks about or exempts any kind of residential development?
A vacant lot needs to have a single family home built in order to put an ADU on it.
No.
I think I get where Cindy's going. What if we said, on a lot already developed with a primary dwelling or on a site located within an approved subdivision that's already served by developed infrastructure, right? Because any vacant lot we have, they're not out in the middle of nowhere. Most of them are right next to, right next, they're, they're within subdivisions. What?
But you can get your ADU approved when, so when you get your primary dwelling approved for building? You can get them simultaneously.
Right. But the issue is, is that you're, you're not, this is addressing adding these to lots that already have improvements on them. And, and we've approved applications on wood and on Alima where it was an unimproved lot that didn't have anything on it. So the language is a little.
Well, not only that, but the other thing that bothers me is if you've got a house on a lot and you want to put your ADU on that lot, and it happens. on a lot and you want to put your ADU on that lot, and it happens that your lot covers, you know, an area where you already have your primary dwelling, but where you put your ADU is, you know, in a more environmentally sensitive area of your lot, how are we saying that, oh, because your primary residence is already there, OK, you can build this anywhere on your lot regardless of environmental sensitivity?
Well, you could call this broad brush, or you could call it meat cleaver, but make no mistake about it, the intent with this legislation is to severely curtail any jurisdiction's ability to say no. If you either have or are proposing to have a primary dwelling, you're not dealing with the forest primeval. If there are significant environmental values inherent in that lot, they would be addressed in the evaluation and discretionary review of the primary residence. So yes, you're going to, you could potentially miss environmental concerns. I would suggest that if this is a significant issue for your commission, that you include that in the direction to staff and in your comments to the town council regarding environmental resources that may be present on the area of the lot that the ADU is on. But as a general rule, if it's already built on, we're not dealing with the forest primeval.
Is the state law that we are trying to avoid having apply by creating our own standards, does it say that these ADUs are not subject to SEQA?
Yes, the, yes. The answer to that is.
So the state legislature has already made these findings, that this is the way it is?
Well, I'm going to defer to our legal experts, but yes, it's not, it's not, put it this way, it's not ever going to be subject to an EIR.
No, it's ministerial. It's a ministerial approval. So there's no SEQA review.
But I guess to Mimi's point, I think it's worth having staff maybe raise those questions. If your staff hasn't already done this, raise these questions to state to get some at least clarification that in certain examples that are provided them, that they really aren't looking at the environmental impact, or that potentially there is a way to address an environmental impact. I think we're getting these, you know, broad-brush kind of templates, and I would assume that some of these, because this is new law, some of these questions haven't been even asked of the state to see what their intent is in particular areas.
Well, I can tell you that the intent of the legislature is to promote the construction of ADUs and JADUs. And if that means that it's ministerial approval, no SEQA review, they've made that decision.
So why are we being asked to make that finding?
Because we always make SEQA findings when we do an ordinance.
But if I don't believe in it, why am I making a finding just rubber stamping what the state's already done if I disagree with it?
Let me ask this question.
Because we're trying to make a defensible ordinance.
I would like to make a defensible ordinance, and frankly, I think that I should believe in the language that I'm putting in there as opposed to be cynically just adopting something that I disagree with fundamentally.
Let me ask this question. Does it, does it make any difference if we remove that section addressing that the planning commission finds those findings?
Of the whole SEQA section?
Well, I would rather be briefed really much better. I think if I was on the town council, I'd also like to have a much more thorough understanding. But I don't get, you guys are asking the planning commission to incorporate these findings into our resolution, making recommendations to the town council. But their ordinance would also include, is it just the planning commission that's making these findings?
It would be the council.
Keep in mind that the question is not whether it's, we're making these environmental findings, it's whether we have a local ordinance that withstands legal challenge that goes beyond the few basic requirements that the state statute does. So that's the real question you have to ask, is do we want to adopt a local ordinance? Or do we want to find that there's these various issues with it that result in it being less legally defensible? So that's really the concern, is that to do nothing is to say to the state, OK, do whatever, some developer can do whatever they want without any consequence.
But that's not what we're saying.
Yeah, this is, you're talking a much broader, you're making a much broader point than I am. I'm narrowing this down to the specific language. And Norma, on page two of the resolution, 2019-20, before you get to the list one through five, at the bottom, it says, and I'll sort of pick it up, which are by definition structures that are accessory to a primary dwelling on the lot. And then moreover, and the language now says the city council, and I think that what we should be saying, if we're going to adopt this, is the planning commission finds that none of the exceptions to the use of the Class Three exemptions set forth in the State Sequel Guidelines, Section 15300.2, apply here specifically. And again, it should say, the planning commission finds that the ordinance will. And then you see one through six. And so, yes, these are findings that we are being asked to make.
Finding that we're asked to make, or this is, this is current law?
It's a question, does the state legislature make the findings, or is the planning commission of the town of Fairfax making these findings? I don't mind saying, I find that the state of California has found the following.
I understand what she's saying, but what, again, what we're trying to do is recommend to the town council that they adopt something that will be legally defensible. And SEQA findings are part of the package. And these are the exemptions for Class Three. And you must find that none of these exemptions apply in order for Class Three to be.
So they're repeated in the urgency ordinance and the non-urgency ordinance as well?
Yes, they are identical.
It is difficult, though, for me especially to swallow number two, not result in a potentially significant cumulative impact, because this, what we're talking about will, you know, does, does actually result in a significant cumulative impact if every lot in Fairfax is suddenly built with an ADU and we have a fire. Think about that. We have double or triple the people. Right.
So let me ask this question.
So it's difficult philosophically to get around that, but we need to get around that to pass the ordinance. So I wanted to get back to actually F.
Well, let me, let me finish, if I can, the question that Mimi had. If we were to adopt this resolution to the town council without this section and have this section included in the town council's or findings, what would be the impact? That we just leave the SEQA findings out of our resolution, but it stays in the town council, which the town council is making the determination?
So.
Just asking.
A developer could attack our recommendation on the basis that we failed to make the necessary SEQA findings and that therefore our local ordinance should be declared null and void, and they should only have to build according to the state standards, which ignore whatever we've added. So it basically works against us.
It could work the exact opposite, though. Can it? I mean, can it work in the sense that, you know, we make findings that are, I don't know, I mean, I kind of find them a little bit laughable. I agree with Phil, this cumulative impact question, isn't that subject to challenge?
What I'd like to ask is whether we can use another SEQA, instead of an exception, use an exemption for the development of an ordinance, so you're not accepting the construction of the.
Or does it exist?
These are exceptions.
So look at where it says, in addition to being statutorily exempt from SEQA, the proposed ordinance is also categorically exempt from SEQA under the Class Three exemption. OK?
Yeah.
And, excuse me, what you, what we normally do when we're making SEQA findings is we don't just limit it to one or two. We put everything in that is even remotely applicable. In the chance that one of them fails, there's something behind it, it's built and suspenders. And so whenever we make SEQA findings, regardless, we put in everything that is even remotely applicable. And it's best to put in, even though you have a statutory, put in a categorical exemption as well. This is what we recommend, and I understand your point. I do. But I also understand that the goal here is to have a legally defensible, as strong as possible, built and suspenders ordinance.
All right. I guess I'll just keep going then. So I have questions about number one, because I don't necessarily agree with the language. If we wanted to work on revising it, I think that would be a good idea. On number two, it didn't even make any sense to me because not result in a potentially significant cumulative impact on what? On the environment? Is that what we're saying?
May I?
Yeah.
These are the exemptions listed in statute, in SEQA.
Oh, so I'm questioning the wisdom of the legislature?
Yes.
How dare I? Number four, not result in damage to scenic resources, including but not limited to trees, historic buildings, rock outcroppings, blah, 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 because no such designation exists for any roadways within the town limits in the adopted 2010-2030 general plan. We do have scenic resources referenced in our general plan, so I had questions about those findings. They may not be a highway officially designated as a state scenic highway, but I wasn't 100% sure about that. I'm questioning number four.
Yeah, so I only know about, I know that in the old general plan, Sir Francis Drake was designated a scenic highway, but in this current general plan, that was removed.
But are we only talking about highways there? It just says not result in damage to scenic resources. So do we have, like, scenic resources in town? Not just highways?
So we have in the conservation element and in the open space element of the general plan references to scenic resources. And I would like to at least ask that that be evaluated in terms of what this finding is. Again, I don't mean to be questioning the language of the specific SEQA exemptions, but this reference to what's in our general plan, I can't imagine is in SEQA.
Let's take a look at that, number four. It warrants further analysis on the language.
I would just like to address the chair about, I don't know, I have a 6:30 AM meeting, and I'm thinking you're going to lose me soon. And I just don't know how, you know, what we need to do to kind of get to a point where we can disaggregate the urgency from the main ordinance, or how are we going to get through everybody's comments? And what do we think we're going to do?
I kind of agree with you. I have early morning things, too. But we are here. Our attorney is here with a cold, for goodness sakes. It seems to me, I mean, that's above and beyond. And these are statutorily required findings for us to make to get this ordinance passed. It seems to me, I mean, I understand we want to argue them. I would like to get back to F10, development will be subject to, and then there's an objective development requirement of the state historical building code, whether that sentence is supposed to be there like that with the blue.
Yes, it is.
OK. So, I mean, we're not supposed to actually insert objective development stand.
No, because we're using the state code.
Ah, OK.
Not our own.
Can we reference then a section there? Is, or section series or something?
Well, I think the intent was simply to allow for the future provision of state-designated historic resources, which, you know, there's only one property in town right now that has it. So, you know, this is kind of a prospective inclusion.
Right. OK, well, I think, so if that's, if that's the language that we're supposed to have there, that's fine. I just, I didn't know if that blue section was something we're supposed to insert or not.
No, that just shows that that was changed.
So through the chair, what I was hoping to do, and Phil, maybe when you were out of the room, I was recommending this, is just go through one page at a time, and we can all sort of give our comments. I would skip to attachment A and just focus on the urgency ordinance and recommend that any comments we have on that, the conforming change be made to the non-urgency ordinance. One of the reasons I never got to attachment C was because I just assumed attachment B was pretty much the same as attachment A. Is that right? OK. So what I was suggesting, Phil, is that we just, like, take one page at a time and just, like, cover our comments, and staff can do the best they can, and we get it done. And if, you know, Michelle falls asleep, we'll wake her up when it's time to go.
OK, I would urge that we use the version given to us tonight, but I understand you have notes there on your attachment A. We just need to refer to that, though, constantly.
Aren't we talking, we're talking about the urgency ordinance, not the.
So, yeah. It's not just the language in 1704810, it's also the actual ordinance that we were provided a.
Right, right.
So I'd start with that. Let's start with page one of attachment A. And I would start up at the top, whereas the town of Fairfax, California, Town, is a municipal corporation. Moving on to paragraph two, unless somebody jumps in.
Wait a minute, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
So in quotes in the parentheses is the word city. I would change that to Town. I don't have anything on paragraph, the second whereas clause, but I would go to the third Actually, you know, these are nitpicky, so I'm not, I'm going to skip over these. Do you guys have any more on one? I have some down at the whereas clauses towards the bottom, when we refer to threatening the character of existing neighborhoods, negatively impacting property values, personal property, and safety, including, and this is where I change it, including emergency evacuation, fire safety, flood, landslide, earthquake.
Utility impacts. I wonder if we should say including but not limited to in there somewhere so that we kind of broaden it somewhat. Is that too, is that allowed?
I don't have anything else on the reso except the SEQA issues that we've already discussed.
Quick question on that SEQA thing where you mentioned the general plan. Would that be feasible to take that one out of the SEQA or no? For notwithstanding damage to scenic resources.
I think Ben said they were going to look into number four.
OK, so you're going to, all right, lose it? All right, sorry, go on.
I don't have anything more on the end of the reso. Now we could go to 174810. Now we could go to 174810.
I think expanding the definitions to include, so this is a standalone document. We heard staff's definition of height measurements, multifamily. I think we heard primary dwelling. There was other definitions we heard tonight with the trees and even the efficiency unit, I think, needed to be brought over here. I think also at the top of two, B and C, the food prep and food storage, I think that's too big. Is that out of the building code?
We went round and round about that.
That's the definition from the Health and Safety Code, I think.
Yeah, we need to leave that.
So the state, I'm sorry, the Health and Safety Code, 17958.1 does define efficiency unit. And 65852.22 defines efficiency kitchen. So that's conforming to that. Do we say somewhere that this provision supersedes all the other code provisions that might say something different? Like, I didn't compare the definition of tandem parking here to our parking ordinance or whatever.
That's a good point. Maybe we should say somewhere under maybe purpose A1 or something that this 0481010 is intended to replace all the old sections.
Well, and not only list them, but you were saying to me, Janet, notwithstanding anything else in our entire code, this needs to stand on itself and not be subject to some definition and some other code provision that somebody could interpret as implicating this language, right?
But Janet, I thought we thought that section three covered that, because it says, "Chapter 17.048 of the Fairfax Town Code is hereby amended and restated as provided in Exhibit A attached here too and incorporated by reference."
But it's the cross-reference to other code sections that I'm concerned about, Linda. Do we have a definition of tandem parking elsewhere in our code? And does that match the new one exactly? And if not, is it clear that the new one is the applicable one here and not the other one?
So we'll come up with that.
We will put that language in. I just want to say, though, that generally under statutory interpretation, when you have a definition in a particular chapter, it goes to that chapter. If you have a different definition in a different chapter, that one goes with that one. But I do understand your point, and we'll put some standalone language.
Yeah, because I think like Michelle was talking, or whoever was talking about it, there's like some words like primary dwelling, primary residence, you know? And it's so ubiquitous, it's going to be difficult.
And I think it's clearer for the average reader reading this who doesn't know what you just said, you know, you can have a resident come and read this and see other definitions elsewhere in the code. So I think whatever we can do to make that clearer, that this stands alone would be good.
I'm moving on to page three.
Just commenting again on this section. Efficiency kitchen is defined here, but I don't see it referenced later in, you know, where does it apply?
It's cross-referenced, so I looked, I followed this up. Efficiency kitchen.
Like, it's not mentioned under maximum size. It's not mentioned under the...
We'll take a look if there's no further mention. We'll...
It's under junior accessory dwelling unit 5D.
5D.
The definition.
On page two.
So then the only other thing would be under non-conforming. We're, of course, referring here to legal non-conforming. And I don't see where 11 public transit is applied later. It originally applied that only accessory dwelling units were allowed within a certain sphere of this public transit. So I see how it's defined greater here, but I don't see where it's limited later.
It's in parking, I think.
As far as non-conforming is concerned, I don't think that we, it's limited to legal non-conforming. So legal non-conforming means it was legal at the time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
But if it's an illegal structure, that wouldn't give them grandfathered basis to replace it.
But legal non-conforming means that it was legal at the time built, and that's not what is referenced there.
So non-conforming zoning condition means a physical improvement on a property that does not conform with current zoning standards. So it could be...
But legal non-conforming means it was legal at the time it was constructed, and maybe it wasn't.
And so therefore, on page nine, item H on non-conforming is not then applicable to the example you just gave?
No, because that's referring to the objective standards.
So remember the example I gave about having a shed that's built in the setback?
Say it again?
Remember the example I gave about having a shed that is built into the setback? And it's probably non-conforming. It was probably never legal to be built into the setback. So legal non-conforming means that it was legal at the time it was built by those codes then in place. And it was probably not legal ever to be into the setback the way it is. So they're talking about that type of non-conformity as far as the zoning provision is concerned.
So where's the legal non-conforming addressed?
It doesn't, it doesn't, it's a further limitation on non-conforming. Non-conforming is broader than just legal non-conforming, so it means the broader one.
I'm not following.
So it could be illegal non-conforming and still be there.
And non-conforming includes both legal and illegal.
So if you have a legal non-conforming and you want to convert space, then nine H applies?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's non-conforming, yes.
Okay, so moving on to the top of page three. A, converted on single-family lot. It says only one ADU or JDU on a lot with a proposed or existing single-family dwelling on it where the ADU or JDU, blah, blah, blah. And actually, I think it should be only one ADU and one JDU. No, it needs to be and.
We're talking, this is a converted, not new. This is converted. I think the rules are different. I will check that language for you.
And yeah, you might as well check for all of them.
Because I know that converted is different than new.
And so then...
So your table here that Ben provided talks about converted space in the primary dwelling unit, and this says maybe an ADU or J.
We'll make sure that that syncs up after we check it.
And so then the maximum four-foot setback on B then, is that maximum or at least? Because you said earlier maximum? And then under converted, then it's sufficient, not maximum?
Where are you?
Here, you were on page three, A or B. Earlier, we talked about a maximum of four-foot setback, but this A just says sufficient for fire safety, and B says or at least, but I think earlier she said maximum?
Yeah, it's, you're looking at it from a different way. So here it says, "If the attached ADU satisfies the following limitations, they have at least side and rear yard setbacks of four feet." That's what the state requires that they have.
Detached.
And...
Detached.
This is detached?
Limited detached, yeah. If the detached ADU satisfies the following limitations, side and rear yard setbacks are at least four feet. So that, when we were looking at it up here, from this perspective, we're looking at what can we do? The maximum amount of setback you can require is four feet.
So in A, A3 versus B1.
B1, A3.
You know, so I think what Michelle was talking about was sufficient versus four
Again, the converted ones are an existing, something that's already there, built, and it's being converted into an ADU.
So where does sufficient, I mean, how is that concrete and definable?
As dictated by applicable building and fire codes. They must meet building and fire codes.
So from the statutory language.
Because it deals with an original single-family home that would have had to be built with all the required setbacks and fire requirements.
So one is converted, one is new. And so then on C, converted multifamily, where did we come up with the 25%? At least one converted for up to 25% of the existing dwelling units?
That's how the state statute is.
It is state law.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And so should we say not including the 150-foot entry somewhere in here? Oh, no, that would be under four areas later.
And then when we get to page four, E1 zoning, maybe you guys will identify the specific zones in the town that this would apply to.
Maybe create a lot in a residential or zone that allows residences.
Well, that's been changed to, or other zone.
For other zone, I need to say residential zone or other zone, but I don't care. You know, in the previous version of 65852.2, it said we should look at considerations and criteria relating to water, sewer, traffic, public safety. I don't know if that's an 881 or not. And I think that we want to encourage this in any zone where you can have a residence.
You want to encourage it or not?
I want to encourage ADUs in zones where you can have a residence. So for example, I want to encourage ADUs in the business area. I want to, you know, half a mile from a public transit bus stop, but, you know, I don't think we should limit it. I think the one exception I'd probably find would be open space zone, just because the whole idea of putting residences in open space zones is concerning to me. But I think you guys should put some thought into what specific zones within the town of Fairfax we're talking about.
And I would agree with that. I would disagree probably with Mimi or have to look at putting these in business zones because we have business zones like downtown where we have the second floor have residences in them. But when you then look at, let's say, your downtown area, do you want to put a detached ADU in there? I don't know. So I think we have to be careful when we say any zone that has any kind of residence in there would be appropriate for an ADU or JADU.
And this is exactly what I think, you know, deserves a lot of fleshing out, you know, when we get back around to doing this again in our free time.
That, I hate to say it, but that's no longer within the town's purview. Our zoning regulations as they exist, which allows any form of housing, has to allow ADUs. That's, the state has said that. So we may not be comfortable with somebody taking over part of their parking lot to put in an ADU, but that's the state's requirement. So again, you know, they deem that the housing will come to the forefront, and they have set up the statute to do so.
I had a question up at the top of the page.
Page four?
Yes, and Cindy, you brought it up earlier about the ADU processing fee, but I wasn't exactly clear if we, do we have to say what the amount is? Can we just say that a fee will be charged? Because that gives you flexibility in case you have to change the number later.
I understand that, and usually we put it in a fee schedule so that it's changeable by a resolution as opposed to two reads in 30 days, which is what it takes to change an ordinance. But if we want it to be in effect on January 1st, we're not going to have a fee schedule before the town council on, in December. So we need to have, if we want to charge it, we need to have it in here for the time being. When you look at it again, perhaps we can pull it out and put it in a fee schedule.
So let me ask this question. So the state requirement is that not only do you have to say you're going to charge a processing fee, but the state requirement says that in your code, you have to identify the specific amount?
Well, if somebody's going to come in and want to submit an application, and they have to know how much that application's going to cost them. It is cost recovery, but it is expected that you will have a set fee for that, that you will have done the math and calculated out what is your approximate cost recovery for processing, checking their application to make sure that it complies with the ADU ordinance. That's in addition to the building permit fee.
I think 500 seems reasonable.
We did do, staff did do the math and calculated out hourly rate times number of hours, et cetera.
So could this be attachment C amendment to the fee schedule to include that?
We will put it in the fee schedule in the future.
So...
But it stands alone.
And take it out of here.
Was that all your comments on this page?
And we will take it out of here and put it in the fee schedule.
Yeah, no, I just didn't want us to be stuck with having $500 like 10 years from now. That was just my other, that was just, that was my concern.
Okay, so my other comment then on this page is on 3B1, that maybe relook at how that's described. I'm interpreting it to mean that if somebody requests a delay and there's this 60-day processing, that it's going to pause for that period and then be restarted. So somehow the told word maybe is a little confusing to me. On the three rental term, I don't know whether 30 days feels adequate to people as a non-rental length of time. It seemed a little short to me. I was, I put a note to say greater, but, you know, whatever. I also think that a rental rate for me, I would still like to have us consider some kind of an inclusionary requirement here where it's linked to some county housing element, very low income rate or something like that is where I'd like to see the ADUs going.
So on the rental term, that's state requirement now. On the rental term, you can't rent them for less than 30 days. We had that, we...
She wants more. But what, the reason we kept it at 30 was because we were contemplating month-to-month tenancy as opposed to a lease.
Also, 30 days is a standard for hotel rooms. If it's, if you're renting it for more than 30 days, you don't pay a transit occupancy tax, for instance, that's charged to hotels and short-term rentals, less than 30 days.
Okay, I yield on that. What do you think about the inclusionary requirement?
I'd love to see it, but I don't know if we can include anything.
I wouldn't, I mean, to me, that, again, we don't have a... I wouldn't, I mean, to me, that, again, we don't have a town inclusionary ordinance and this, and we're looking at this again to get this through as an emergency urgency ordinance. That would be something to look at when we look at this in the future.
Yeah, and just FYI, we are looking at a, an inclusionary ordinance for Fairfax. That's part of a planning grant that we're applying for. So in conjunction with other jurisdictions in Marin that don't have it, we have to actually do an analysis and justification for whatever ratio we set. Those are typically some percentage of a subdivision, you know, if you do four lot subdivision, one of them has to be affordable, the unit that's built has to be affordable. So this one's going to be a little bit trickier, but it, I'm assuming it requires the same type of analysis in terms of feasible and not discouraging the provision of affordable units and requires a prior study. So we'll try to throw that in with our inclusionary fee study.
I don't consider that very visionary of us.
Yeah, it's hard to be visionary when you have deadlines like this. We talked a little bit about the sprinklers. I'm at the bottom of four, and I'm going to turn over to five. You know, the no separate conveyance thing is interesting that the new legislation is allowing separate conveyances or allowing us to allow separate conveyances, I should say. And I was looking at AB 587 that would allow us to allow it, and there seemed to have been a discussion about the prohibition on separate conveyances hindering shared ownership models for like tenancies in common and things like that. I don't know that we have that as a, as a concern here in Fairfax in terms of, you know, somebody being able to convey the ADU separately from the primary dwelling unit. But this is something that's now been opened up by the legislature to allow, and we are carrying over, proposing here to carry over the no separate conveyances statute from our existing code. But I just thought that to the extent we get down the road and we think about this, you know, it's something to look at, you know, what is the impetus behind this new legislation? Why are they saying that we should think about allowing those separate conveyances under certain circumstances?
Because I was going to recommend that we said unless they met the subdivision requirements, in other words, you could have, you may have a situation where it's actually subdivisible or appears as if it's a town home or a condo or something like that, and why not?
Well, why not, why not? I think, I think this language is good here, no separate conveyance, because if you think about it, you, you might have a small unit, you might have a lot that has to be subdivided or a lot line adjustment made, and it could end up being a real mess.
It could create really severe non-conforming conditions if you're allowed to split up a small lot.
But I just think it's something that we should be thinking about when we get down the road, because there may be circumstances where it might be a boon to promoting affordability of smaller.
But apparently we can't take any special circumstances into account. We have to, we can't do, I mean, it's not going to be us anyway, it's going to be an ministerial process, so.
Well, well, my understanding is that the legislation has opened this issue up into a different category. AB 587 is what I was looking at. So when we get down the road, we can look at that a little bit closer. I still didn't understand about the septic system. Is onsite water treatment system a composting or incinerating toilet? What is that?
It's whatever the, the county regulations are. I'm not sure if that is those type of systems, especially not for a new unit with a new system. So I, I don't believe the county allows composting at this time, but I don't know.
No, the county doesn't.
Does any council in this town?
Yes, yes. At the end of Cascade, all the houses at the end.
And do we have any, we don't have anything about, you know, alternatives to getting sewer hookup, right? For some of these ADUs where you've got the composting toilets or the incinerating toilets, and neighbors complained about things like odors and, and stuff like that. So I'm just wondering if it's a consideration in terms of the ADU, because if I'm correct and the cost of getting sewer hookups for, you know, a shed that you want to turn into your ADU is potentially so exorbitant that it's just going to make it impossible, people might be exploring some of the other technologies that are out there for, you know, dealing with waste. And so I was just wondering if those considerations are something, again, down the road we may want to talk about.
Yeah, I think we could leave that up to the professionals who deal with public safety, because if you do it wrong, you do have problems with surfacing effluent or odors or the various, I mean, it's, it's, put it this, it's not something you want to have a problem with. So that's where we just say the county has people that deal with that as part of their, their jobs, and we would just rely on them to make those kinds of determinations about alternatives to the alternative.
Keep going, Mimi.
Well, no, now I'm going to stop because that just, that's not satisfactory to me. So we're Fairfax. We're not just going to wait and let the county deal with the housing crisis. We're going to be a little bit more proactive, aren't we? Aren't we going to be Fairfaxians and, and think about new technologies? And aren't we going to get ahead of some of the problems that we've already heard about with some of these things? And I'm not talking tonight, but down the road, aren't we talking about maybe, I mean, my vision for what we're going to end up doing is not only going to the council with an urgency ordinance, a, you know, mirrored regular ordinance, and a plan down the road to be more thoughtful about this, but I think we have to have a whole strategy. I think we have to have a bigger picture strategy. Frankly, I think we need to present to the town council a bigger picture strategy, but I don't see how you're going to be able to do that between now and December. So what I'd like to see, because a lot of the legislation that we're talking about is requiring updates to different elements of the general plan, there's all sorts of opportunities for us as we move forward in time to update the general plan and do things that are going to impact some of this. And so I would like to see a big picture strategy for, you know, what are we going to do in terms of the, you know, the, the types of units that we're going to be allowing? The, you know, are we going to allow yurts? You know, what are we going to do about waste issues and sewer issues? And how are we really going to address the cost issues that are preventing people from turning their homes into more units for, for low-income residents? I'm sorry, I get it on my high horse. Keeping on going, owner occupancy, I think we beat that dead horse. Deed restrictions, again, when we get down. So in deed restrictions, there's a lot of very, and I realize, I think this is probably because, Janet, you had the template, but there's just minor deviations from our existing deed restriction language that I would prefer we evaluate and figure out why we're doing that. Prior to issuance of a building permit for an ADU or JADU, a deed restriction must versus shall be recorded against the title of the property in the county recorder's office in a copy filed with the director versus Town Planning and Building Services in our current ordinance. The deed restriction must versus shall run with the land and bind all futures owners, heirs, successors, or assigns. You know, so it's just these kinds of, this is the kind of thing that, you know, when I get into the detail, I'm like, why? Why are we deviating from what we had in the other one? And.
Before going off, number five, adding to 6D nonprofit, because I thought that was some of the language in the BBK memo was that, that occupancy requirement, no. I thought nonprofit was mentioned in there.
In the last sentence, does not apply if the property is entirely owned by another governmental agency, land trust, or housing organization, and you're saying governmental agency, nonprofit.
Well, I'm saying nonprofit housing organization.
Is that, is the language that we have here out of the code, I mean, out of the legislation? So if, and if, if it is out of the legislation, would that housing organization then include nonprofit housing organizations?
Can we expand that language is the question really? I, I think this language here in D is more general and maybe more acceptable. If we start getting too specific here, nonprofits are all kinds of nonprofits. We would have to kind of specify.
Nonprofit housing.
You know, under, under some California nonprofit statute.
All right, I'm, I'm going to keep moving here. I'm all the way onto page seven, down to parking.
Six, just make, I guess it was in the corrected version, but make sure that the floor area and lot coverage ratios are corrected.
And I just wonder whether the maximum size, we needed to add one for conversion or something, or?
We'll check on that.
I'm down to parking.
Can we add anything in here about health and safety related to streets not meeting standard and somehow linking it to anything related to parking?
We already explored that.
Well, I have a, I have a question under the language of parking, seven, eight, and let's see, B2, located within an architecturally and historically significant historic district. Can it be or instead of and historically, so that it could be architecturally significant or historically significant?
We've got historically significant historic district.
I don't think we have a district, do we?
No.
So even if we did architecturally significant historic district?
Something like that, but just, just so that we kind of can have an architecturally significant building and separately historically significant building, because we don't have any designated historical buildings here, but we have some incredible architecture.
Does it require designated historic?
No, it doesn't, that's true.
It requires a district.
Significant historic district.
We have a historic downtown district.
But we haven't.
So I guess the, the thought, the question here is, is this out of the, directly out of the legislation? And then what is the meaning within it of historically significant?
I believe.
Historically significant historic district. Sounds a little odd, but.
It's a bit redundant.
I will double-check it. I believe it is out of, out of the state statute, but I will double-check it.
And then I guess, you know, identifying the definition of a historically significant historic district.
All right, so my question on B2 was, do we have any architecturally and historically significant historic districts in Fairfax? And then on B4, it says when on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the occupant of the ADU, do we have on-street parking permits in Fairfax?
No.
And number five, when there is an established car share or vehicle stop located within one block of the ADU, do we have any car share vehicle stops located within Fairfax?
But these things could happen in the future. I know the parking, the parking district was explored at one point.
Exactly. We have talked about that.
I just wanted to clarify, I'm not saying take it out, I just wanted to see if there was anything here that comported to any of these things.
Well, it does say, you know, when these things are required, so if we ever do require them, then we'll have the language in place.
Right. But I just wanted to see if there was anything here now, and so I've got my question answered. We talked about fees, impact fees, we talked about schools, we talked about utilities. You guys said you're going to follow up with the fire, with the other utilities to get in.
Just a second, what about eight, nine, and 10? Are we done with those insert language things? Okay. Fantastic, thank you.
Is it also federal endangered species act exempt? How do you get federal exemption from a state legislation? I would like to prohibit takings of federally protected species or habitat.
Do you have that?
Yeah, we have spotted owls.
Would it, would it, would it not preempt?
And like NAPA, false indigo.
That's under the state. That's not a federal, generally speaking, Mimi, as you're aware, the SEQA thresholds are lower than the, the SEQUA thresholds are lower than the NEPA threshold, so.
But hey, if we can cite to federal laws that are, even if they're not as strict as state laws, but are still a safety net, I would like to cite them.
We'll look into it.
So when you look at the, when you talk to the utilities, you're going to talk to the electric utilities, you're going to talk to the water, you're going to talk to the sewer.
Program or whatever fire district or, or some parks fee or what?
Well, it's possible, but it requires a bigger study than anything we can do right now.
So we don't, but capital improvement program?
Still, if you're talking about a traffic impact fee based on your capital improvement program, you still have to have a study connected with that.
I'm done.
So do we have a motion?
Are there any other comments to the extent of Mimi's comments?
And before we go any further, there is, oh God, there is one more little tweak. I know. This is, this is really minor and I can't find the.
But it's okay, I think I can do it. Are you talking about the language at the very end?
Yes. Yes, it, it has to do with publication, and we have recently changed our policies, and so in an abundance of transparency, I've got a. I've got language, God, I'll find it.
The town clerk shall certify to the pass. The town clerk shall certify to the passage and adoption of this ordinance shall cause this ordinance to be posted within 15 days after its passage in accordance with six, three, six, nine, three, three of the government code.
We're talking about sections five and, and new section five, right. I think that would be a good addition.
So where is that added?
As section five. In, in the, in the beginning of the urgency ordinance, not in the ordinance itself, but in the...
Thank you.
I'll send a has that.
I have it. Well, I don't have the language, but this is, we have to put the new language in there.
And you have new language for section five for the regular ordinance too, right? On the backside?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
And that also seems fine to me.
So I'll ask the question again, do we have a motion?
I will try for a motion, but I don't think I can repeat all the changes. You're gonna have to rely on the minutes or the transcript for all the changes.
I've been writing them down. I, I don't know if I'll be able to read my writing, but...
We will confer and make sure we incorporate the changes directed by your commission.
All right, so I move for adoption of resolution number 2019 dash 20 of the planning commission of the town of Fairfax, recommending the town council adopt both an urgency ordinance and a non-urgency ordinance amending chapter 17, point 048 of the Fairfax Town Code relating to residential accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units and determining the ordinance to be exempt from SEQA with the changes that the commission has directed staff and council to make.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, I do appreciate it, I understand how difficult this is. We hope never to have to do this again, but we, we very much appreciate your understanding.
And we will look to putting this on our schedule early in the year. Ben?
There are, yes.
Thank you. And can we take a little break, please, since we have HRD to go through?
Yeah, let's take a break and see all you guys next month.
I know, it shouldn't take long.
That's what we said last week, and it took another hour and a half.
Commission is recommending to the council and that we intend to continue to work on as a work program item. So what's happening is the HRD applicability section in the HR, proposed HRD zoning amendments, specifically 17072020. The question is, is that, do we reference, and this is as near as we can tell, what was referred to, I, I put this on your desk, this is the suitability for open space. This is what Mr. Egger was showing a picture of when he was here, and this is our very first take on applying a GIS overlay to this, in which you can see, of course, is that the town of Fairfax is, you know, less than half of the area of the suitability for open space. It also points out that the title of the suitability of open space isn't what was in, actually in the general plan, and what the HRD referenced isn't what was in the general plan, that the general plan referenced was the former general plan, not the current general plan. In the staff report, we provided two documents. The first, well, there's four attachments. The first is S three, which is what is in our current general plan, and immediately behind that map is what we think is a more clarified version of that S three. It's not in our general plan, this is taken directly from the county website, and that things that should be noted, number one, neither one of these documents are referred to in the current zoning ordinance, so what it's, what it's referring to is something that doesn't exist, that has no legal statute. Second, when we look at this figure S three, which your commission said, yes, we believe that this is the appropriate, one of the appropriate references in the HRD applicability triggers, that if you look at figure S three, it's got some problems from a legibility standpoint. For example, the, the many landslides legend item doesn't actually exist. It is a layer in the county's GIS program, and this was taken from the county's GIS program, but the many landslides, that designation in the county's GIS programs does not lie within the area of Fairfax or anywhere on this, the area encompassed within this diagram. So what, what it does have in the county's GIS program is something called few landslides, which is the area that isn't the mostly landslides portion of Fairfax, but is still within the hillside area. We, staff believes that as we go forward with updating the references in the HRD, that we should customize the GIS layers from the county Marin map program and retitle the area that is currently titled few landslides to read multiple landslides. And the reason is, is that Linda, and God bless her incredible historical knowledge, was able with relatively little work to come up with 19 landslides or unstable soil conditions that are documented that lie within an area that the county deems a few landslides, and we feel like, rather than coming in and saying, we're gonna apply the HRD triggers for something that the county calls few landslides, we're, we intend to go forward with a custom Fairfax layer and take that few landslides and rename that multiple landslides, because that's an accurate description, and it reflects the concern that the town has with developments in those zones and is an appropriate trigger for applying HRD provision. So that's that. Now, the other thing that your commission recommended adoption is the Salem Rice map, and this one was actually much easier to start to geo-reference, you know, it's already digitized, obviously, and you can see, just with a little bit of work we've been able to do, and this is attachment C, we've already got the streets in there, we've got all of the Salem Rice slope stability zones, the ones that go one through four. The intention is to include an HRD trigger for zones three and four, and that's a, an adjustment in the text that we should make in the ordinance language that goes to the council, and we will do so. We are in the process of getting that fully geo-reference, and by that I mean, we will have this reference to actual points in space that are very accurate. Ideally, this will be somewhere on the, on the scale of 20 inches, it'll only be 20 inches off this map versus what's actually reflected as a physical reality on the ground, and we will be able to easily determine with either the county's Marin map GIS layer, which is, will ultimately be an improved version of attachment B, or this attachment C, which your planning commission is already recommending, and we're simply just, we're just making sure it's accurate. We'll get those corrected, or excuse me, clarified and made very accurate. Now, the final question is, what may be what was referred to in the current HRD provisions, and this is this suitability for open space, and the challenge is going to be trying to take this down to the level of a lot, which is really what you're wanting to do if you're gonna apply it to people's properties and telling people, yes, you have to go through an HRD provision, that provisions are not. And so the concern is, is that this is gonna be very difficult to digitize and geo-reference with a high degree of accuracy, and we are already in the process of digitizing the town's 1974 maps. This arose out of the digitization process, so we will preserve these as source documents and as historic resources, but that the more current items are much more usable. Other concerns that were raised at the town council meeting include this idea that somehow the HRD provisions would weaken current provisions, for example, eliminate requirements that residential properties have street frontage. Staff would simply note that this doesn't change existing provisions in the town's code and our subdivision regs governing street frontage, so that is not a concern, that as stated to the council, these are additive to what the current requirements are in those zoning districts, and that the additions that the HRD provisions provide are the objective standards that we well know are the only things by which we may judge housing development. So, you know, this is stuff that your commission is well familiar with, and so this is simply an information item. If your commission has any comments or, or direction, we're happy to listen to it. Thank you.
So I have a question on this. You've got the, the town ordinance, I mean, the, yeah, the town ordinance attached to this, which is different than, attachment E, right, is different than what came before us last month?
Yes, it reflects the, the changes that your commission directed, and then I believe there was one, yes, and you could see that in the strike through, so what we tried to, what we, and staff is always looking for direction, the wildland interface zone was directed by your commission to be removed, and that we recognized that we did not have sufficient clarity in the, in 17072020 applicability A to reference the categories three and four in the Salem Rice map. So that is a recommended change that we would do, and that furthermore, that the areas that fall within the mostly or many landslides be renamed, when, excuse me, that that's what we would use, it's out of the figure S three, and...
So I've got that, so you're changing that from what we had last time. We don't need to redo what we had before, correct? This is what you're gonna send to...
No, this is...
So the only thing, because I still have the last one to sign, on this one, delete the watershed areas?
Okay.
Where is that?
I'm sorry, in the first whereas, we had deleted that at our meeting, and we haven't corrected that on the one I'm to sign, so that was, the correction was gonna be to delete that as well, and just leave it at, with the landslide hazard zones.
That are entirely or partially within landslide hazard zones?
Period.
Semi-colon and whereas.
Period.
Okay.
Or whatever, right, okay. Any questions for staff? Alrighty, um, thank you. Next item, minutes from the November meeting, right?
This is the November meeting.
Um, any corrections to the, to the minutes?
Overall, I thought the, the minutes were really, were really well-written and really reflected, I think, the, the discussion, but I did, on page 13, under my comments, near the bottom of the page, if we were included, then almost every property in town would have to go through the HRD process, I wanted, I think what I was trying to say was that HRD process should not be required for small projects, I was trying to relate it that, so if we could add that sentence, I could appreciate it, and I didn't see anything else.
Any other corrections to the minutes? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Thursday, October 17th, 2019, with the additional comment that I made on page 13.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you. Commissioners' comments, I had a couple quick ones. I wanted to mention that the Sonoma State Annual Planning Conference is February 1st next year, just putting that out there for info, that was good last year when I attended. Also, at last month's meeting, commissioners had questions about the lodge, did you all have a chance to look into that? You can say no, I'm just asking, since it was...
Yes, we followed up, it was determined that the areas in question fall within the jurisdictional boundary of San Anselmo, and that we referred it to San Anselmo for their determination on any sidewalk encroachments.
And they actually, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but they did apply for an encroachment permit, which they were granted by Public Works in San Anselmo for those tables.
What about the signage? Somebody mentioned the signage that they have as well, last month.
I don't remember about the signage.
Yeah, I think, I think it was, if, it's in our minutes, that somebody, they've got all those signs hanging, that was the other thing to look at, so...
Oh, those new signs, okay.
I think we were gonna follow up.
But I think, I'm, I think that portion of the building is also in San Anselmo.
Yeah, it's, it's one of these tricky...
The building projects into the public right-of-way, so I don't think we're, I don't know what we do about that.
It's, it's difficult when you don't have jurisdiction over a particular portion of a property, so maybe we could talk to San Anselmo about that.
The roof overhang, yeah, it's really a weird situation.
Presentation at the December council meeting of the housing laws, we had asked for that for us, for a long time, and it looks like it's gonna be at the December meeting of the town council. It's not a joint meeting, so for those of us that may not attend or may not watch it, how do we get that same information that we'd been asking for?
It will be available online, of course, and if you have specific questions, I think they would be willing to contemplate addressing that in their presentation, so get it in quickly, though, because we have a short week next week.
Well, we won't have any questions unless we had seen the presentation, but if they're, right? But if they're gonna, if they're gonna provide a PowerPoint, at the minimum, it would be good for us to get a copy of that PowerPoint.
Okay, we will secure that. I, I'm assuming they do. There are also a number of legislation, or housing-related PowerPoints out there, if you'd like, I could try to rustle some of those up and send them to your commission. I mean, it's, whatever you're seeing with ADUs is reflected in further housing legislation.
Right, and I understand that, but I think... Right, and I understand that, but I think we'd ask for that presentation, so, and we'd ask for anything even from the League of Cities. So if they're going to do a presentation, they're going to have, I'm sure, a PowerPoint that they're going to show. So we should get a copy of that.
Okay, we will endeavor to do so.
And then do we have a December meeting? Did we decide we're going to do that? So if you can.
Yes. December 19th, we've confirmed that a clear quorum of the commission is able to attend that, on that date.
Any other commissioner comments, Mimi?
Yeah. So to the extent that these are issues that might be addressed in that presentation for the town council, I'd appreciate it. I did do a lot of research on the new legislation because I was trying to get a handle on what we were looking at this evening. And one of the things that struck me was that there are numerous opportunities that state legislatures are creating for potential economic solutions to the housing crisis. And I'm hoping that we can get more information about some of those opportunities and how we might play a role in, you know, helping, you know, the economics of this, the housing crisis. One of them is the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority. I'm interested in learning more about that. There's something called the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing Districts. I'm interested in those. There's some legislation relating to community land trust tax exemptions. I'm interested in how they might apply with Victory Village, if at all. And there's a National Mortgage Special Deposit Fund for vulnerable homeowners and renters. And then there's an organization called No Place Like Home, or projects, called No Place Like Home Projects. And these are all the subject of new legislation in 2019 relating to the housing crisis. The other things I've seen are sort of stuff I, again, I want us to get ahead of in the coming year. There are things coming down the pike with these new laws that will do things like require us to identify surplus lands, to identify available residential lands, to identify surplus public lands in an inventory. There are requirements that we update our housing element. The HCD is developing a list of state grants and financial incentives for ADUs to incentivize and promote affordable ADUs. I'd like to see us really think about how we can integrate some of these opportunities into our future plans. One of the things that most of this legislation talks about is energy efficiency. And so to the extent some of those discreet measurable criteria can be focused on energy efficiency, I think that'll be a really good path for us to look at. And, I don't know, so just, those are some of my thoughts, because I think the financial incentives are really the key to seeing our town do something that might have real impacts on the housing crisis as opposed to, you know, just nominal impacts.
If you could send me a list of those opportunities, I'd like to follow up with those. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're out of here.